You know, Austin. Welcome to the August sixteenth, twenty twenty one Select Board meeting. We're going to get started this evening with a Paulson Police Department appointment for a new officer and I'm going to let the lieutenants do the introduction. I see we have a guest at the table. Looking forward to meeting you. We'll have some questions from the board. I will let the lieutenants introduce you to the board.
After the Paulson Police Department. Guillermo Valencia, who's our top candidate. So you did our extensive hiring process, which included a physical ability testing, which mirrors the academy qualifications through an interview panel. Five officers, myself and three, through a personal interview with the chief. And then this extensive background check. We did last week. Comes to us from the Tufts University Department, where he was a security officer and a patrolman. About three and a half years or so.
Yes, sir.
So our top candidates, very well, and I'd please to bring it before you.
Great, great. The board's had a chance to review the recommendations from the police department as well as your resume and supporting documents. So I'm going to turn to John Cronin, who's the clerk of the chair of the board, excuse me, and Ben Sparrow, who is the vice chair of the board himself. We have some questions, but before I do that, would you like to introduce yourself to the board and to the community as well?
So my name is Guillermo Valencia. I'm thirty years old from Everett. Like I said, I was a current police officer for the Tufts University Department, assigned to the Graffington Campus. I was there for about over a year and a half as a police officer in campus security before that. Really exciting. And it's a pleasure to meet all of you folks. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the opportunity.
Great. Alright, so let me turn to Mr. Cronin and.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. A few questions. You know, from your resume, you had three and a half years at Tufts University. You went to North Essex Community College. For your police academy, you hold an associate's degree in Foster College.
Yes, sir.
Tell us a little bit about why you want to be a police officer.
In this town or just in general?
In general.
Ever since I was a little kid, I could interact with every police department. I came from a family that were country that I would help out. They don't speak English, I was translate. So I feel like it's a calling for me and I feel like I love helping people. I love talking and it's just like my human nature, honestly. And as much as I had the experience with every police department, I just always want to give back to the community. Now I have a beautiful daughter who will be six months old. Thank you, sir. I just want to give back as much as I can to the community. I can be a part of, sir.
So tell me a little bit, what do you expect to be your experience here in Holliston? This is different than a college campus, so tell me what you expect to see as a patrolman on R B.
Honestly, I don't know what to expect, but I want to do my best, be as good a patrolman as I can be, try and move up the ranks. Before that, I want to give back to the community. Like I said, this is like a privilege and honor and I like to be part of the community. I did a civil police officer for three years, so I did volunteer work. So being with the community, the community that supports the police department, to me is huge, especially in this climate. So I just want to give back as much as I can. I want to be part of any events, charities, to show the town that I really appreciate the opportunity, sir.
I'm sorry, where is he? Where were you in the military?
So I was a year and four months for some of the police department and then I was about two years for the average of the police department, sir.
You were also CPR certified, AED certified.
And first aid partner, yes, sir.
And cat, right?
And cat, yes, sir.
Do you know anything about Holliston?
I know it's about twenty point two square miles. I know it borders Ashland, Midway, Midlife, Sher- Sherford. It's a small community, founded seventeen twenty-four. I know real estate is kind of expensive. But it's a small little town. I never thought of it. I did a little bit of research of it. That's all. And it has like a good school system and everything like that.
Well, let me just say you're coming from a pretty good police department, but you're coming to a really good one. Great leadership. We welcome you and thank you for answering my questions this morning this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Sure, welcome. Just a couple of quick questions. Could you just talk a little bit about how you, like, I sort of ask this whenever we have a police coming in, is to talk a little bit about integrity. Just like, could you just tell me what you think about that word and about like what it means to you?
So when I was at the police academy last year, that's one of the principles that I've learned throughout my, it was almost six and a half months because of the pandemic. But integrity is huge and everything. Like I said, I live by that rules and not just my professional life, but my personal also. We had a situation in the academy that it shows like example, integrity is huge, it carries everything. So as much as like this all made the principles we had learned in the academy, I think integrity is one biggest thing, especially in a small town like this, that I checked the social media and everything like that. And I know, like I said, the community members support the police department. I wouldn't want to ruin that bond or anything like that. So I know integrity is huge. So I know it plays a pivotal role and not just this career, but any other career. But to me, just like, it just exemplifies like you're just more than a person with a badge and gun. You're a person too. You can be part of this community too. So like, to me, it's just, there's so many things that come to my mind, honestly, but I believe integrity is one of the biggest principles and what it does in the academy, sir.
Okay. And just another quick question. Could you just talk a little bit, you actually mentioned it in your statement there, just talking about community and like, how would you engage with the community?
So it's kind of ironic, like through my time with the police process, I feel like I meant nothing by great people, positive people. And like I told them about like my movement situation and like they've been really supportive and like that's what I want for my daughter. Like I said, I did a civil police for three years for two different cities. So like, like I told you, there's no other great feeling when someone comes up to you and says, thank you. Even though they don't know, like sometimes we're not, we're on our, so we don't carry anything like that. We work with full-time officers too. So like I said, I just want to be, I'm in a part of my life, I just want to give back to the community, especially now I have a daughter. I just think differently now. And like I said, this town is a really good town. I feel like it's like a family community oriented town. But on top of that, like I said, this is a town that supports the police department. And right now, this climate, to me, is huge. It makes a lot of difference and like, it motivates you, you want to do better and day in, day out, sir.
Oh, absolutely. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
I apologize for the interruption. You have a beautiful daughter. She will one grow up, one day grow up to be just like my beautiful daughter. If you do a good job, she'll run errands for you. Retrieve forgotten items. So pleasure to meet you.
Pleasure.
Enjoyed hearing your answers to the questions asked. I have a couple. You come from Tufts. You obviously interacted with youth, with students at Tufts. Can you just connect that to me, for me, to community policing here in Holliston?
So I was assigned to the Graffington Campus, which is an animal hospital campus. So I double people who are a little more mature.
Okay.
So when I first started my field training on observation, which is in the Memphisville campus, I was there for six weeks. So we had kids that just graduated high school, first time being by themselves. I feel like you were like a caretaker more than anything. You try to provide as much service they need. You try to give them the guidance that they might seek for because you know, it's a new thing, a new chapter in their lives. So I try my best, especially that I'm a Spanish speaking officer. So I put in that play, I was, every time I talked to a student, I would make sure like they were part of like my family, like I was to care and that's the way I can. I always go a little bit over beyond and try and help them as much as I can. It was kind of tough because my schedule and everything, but I was trying to find a way, at least try to talk to one to three students per shift on an eight-hour shift. Like I said, I try to be that game changer that, you know, they need, they could be like, oh, you know, I can talk to Officer Valencia. Or I want to make sure they have a good, like memory of moment, like, oh, you know, police is not that bad. No, I talked to this officer and this officer did this, this and that to me. I can't tell how many times parents came up to me and thanked me, just fully, just giving directions and stuff like that, or just walking with them, be like, oh, maybe your kid could go this way and that way. And just reassure them that, you know, they're going to be safe, they're in good hands and everything like that. We're on twenty-four seven, three and six part day. So they feel comfortable, they feel great, especially kids or students that come from out of state too. So like I said, just give them their reinsurance and stuff like that. Now, like I said, I put that into my personal life with my daughter and I hope any future when she goes to college or university, it obviously could do the same.
Right. Okay. You mentioned Spanish is your first language, second language?
Not first language.
Okay, so you have translation skills in Spanish. Okay. Just Spanish or other languages?
So I'm a Spanish speaker fully. I taught myself American Sign Language, but the thing is, if you don't want to practice, you forget. So I know a couple of words and letters and stuff like that. Other than that, that's.
Okay. Coming back to community policing, do you have any special interests for your time here in Holliston? Are you looking forward to any particular aspects of what you know of the Holliston?
So first and foremost, I just want to get on, try to be a good officer on pass probation. If I can attend to any training, I would like to do that. If I can just volunteer some time, just give back to the community, stuff like that. That's one of the most important things for me. Like I said, I just want to give a lot of offerings for my girlfriend and for my daughter. That's the most important thing. So like I said, I just want to get hands on as soon as I can, but first and foremost, I have a job to do. So I want to make sure I do it the best I really can. And then build a confidence with my superiors and then, like I said, I want to give back to the community.
How long is the probation period? I don't have any other questions. If you look behind you, you'll see the, well, don't look behind you, it's a little spooky. So we do have an audience, both virtually and here in the room. So we typically open it up and let the public ask questions if they have any. Are you, are you comfortable?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it to the, those present in the room. If there are any questions, I'll start here in the room first, Officer Candidate Valencia, I think I said that correctly. I don't see any hands here in the room, so I'm going to turn to the Zoom call. If there's anybody listening on the Zoom call, you can go ahead and unmute yourself if you have a question to ask or raise your hand. And I don't see any callers wanting to ask questions, so I think you got off the hook tonight on that. So you are looking for a vote of the board to appoint?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a motion for that?
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Guillermo Valencia, Patrol Officer of Paulson Police Department. I'll second that motion.
Okay, on, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so that's three oh that carries. And I heard from Chief Stone before he goes on vacation that pending the appointment, not completed, you're at work tomorrow at seven thirty in the morning.
Seven.
Seven AM. I'm going to be trying that, three seven.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you so much.
See you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Exactly. I'm just wearing it on my phone.
Listen.
You said tomorrow morning to bring it down.
Ready to go tomorrow. Thank you so much, folks. I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Oh, we're all set with you and the chair. Alright, so we're packing up to go. We're going to move ahead on the agenda. That's item number one.
Thank you so much.
Next up on the agenda is the sidewalk study from StanTech. Travis, do you have anybody here in the room from StanTech? We do. Okay, I don't have names, so forgive me. Come on up to the table and introduce yourself.
I have.
Okay.
Again, I'm to the high chair of the Select Board, Jonathan Clark.
No, Scott, happy. He's Victor. Stand that. Point out and we're here tonight to present our accessibility study.
So I will bring up the presentation for you. Unfortunately, the screen is going to be behind you. So what I can try to do is focus this towards you in a moment.
Sure.
It is a large process. Give me one second.
There's a couple of questions in there, but first mine.
Okay, and then the other thing I'll mention for people at home is that, Chris, you said that the report is up on the special project page.
Select Board under twenty twenty-one studies.
Okay, so the report is subject to change, but it is online at the moment for anybody viewing from home. And then obviously, I will bring up the presentation as well for the gentleman to get to the Select Board.
One second. Intention mode. Yeah.
Bill, he's setting that up. I believe I saw your names, correct me if I'm wrong, on the sidewalk study completed for the town of Maine. I think it was twenty seventeen, so it's kind of ancient history, probably, this kind of question. You've done sidewalk studies for other communities?
We have, yes, we have, yeah.
Maybe one of them.
Correct, yeah.
Any other neighbors for Holliston?
Over here, Douglas just completed, Spencer, we do mostly urban environments in Boston. And for so, you know, we've been focused on transportation asset sidewalks being more, if they.
I think the slide and presentation is ready whenever you are.
Okay.
Yep, and if you could just make sure you're speaking into the mics as well, because we are on HCAT as well as Zoom. And I will move these, or actually, you know what, you can move them. If you want to use that.
Yeah, that works.
Great.
So today is August sixteenth, not the twenty-third, it's indicated in this presentation. But our agenda tonight is going, I'm going to go through and talk about these accessibility requirements, kind of some background information. Turn it over to Victor to describe the self-evaluation process and the findings. And then come back to me on the recommendations and open up the questions, great comments. So, so this, some background, there's two governing agencies surrounding accessibility. The Bay one is the American Disability Act, ADA, which was signed into law in nineteen ninety. It's one of America's most complicated civil rights piece of legislation that prohibits discrimination and guaranteeing people with disabilities the same opportunity as every citizen. Essentially, within these rules regulations, which are over thirty years old, communities are required to do what we call a self-evaluation. And it's essentially a detailed assessment of your sidewalks, which is what StanTech has created. Victor's going to get into it. The second part of it is, we need to take that data to develop what we call an ADA transition plan. How are we going to transition current non-compliant sidewalks and ramps in town to compliant? So Victor will go through the prioritization method and what. The second agency is the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, called the MAAV. So they're essentially the local regulatory agency within the Office of Public Safety. They've developed a specialized code under C M R by twenty-one, which basically outlines if these, the very detailed rules to slopes, dimensions of sidewalks, ramps in the public right of way and also in buildings, like by you go from a sidewalk into a building. If one was to complain about a, say, a crossing, they normally would go to the A B, file a complaint. In turn, it would turn into a violation to the local municipality. Our job is to protect them. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Victor to kind of get go through methodology.
Good evening. So we started this project back in mid-spring, started collecting all the data for all your ramps, sidewalks, and we also collected minor stuff on your crossings, the crosswalks. Basically, what we used was an iPad. I was out there in the field, walking all of your sidewalks, checking all of your ramps and doing an investigation. With that investigation, I basically started off by taking a picture of the asset, at least one, depending on any attributes or any distresses that I saw. And then I started identifying the materials, so whether it was concrete, asphalt, brick, and so on. Then after that, basically, I just, as I walk them, gathering any distresses that are along the sidewalk. And then as far as the ramps, I'm getting all of the required measurements for ADA and MAAV standards. After that, we, and we got all, and use that using a two-foot level to get the slopes and then a tape measure to get any width that are required. Once we collected all that data, it's all hosted online and we bring it down. And that's when we start doing the analysis and just also doing a comprehensive QC. And then the final step is what Bill was alluding to, when you're going to start that transition plan, is giving you a network priority rating based on criteria, which I'll be going through in the next few slides. So let's just go through your existing data, starting with the ramps. So I identified four hundred and ninety-seven ramps in the town. That also includes some missing ramps. And what that means is, if there is a crosswalk leading to nowhere, and there's a sidewalk that just ends and there's no way for anyone that needs it to get on and off. Mostly your sidewalks are made, ramp start are made up of asphalt, which was about seventy-six percent. And then the other twenty-four was concrete, which is mainly on Washington Street for the most part. Now, this scares people, but ninety-seven percent of the ramps did not meet ADA or MAAV compliance. It sounds like a crazy number. It's always scares every town, but for the most part, this is something that a lot of towns don't focus on until, would say, recent years. Right. So there's many things that can go into a failure. The biggest one was it being missing. So that's twenty-eight percent. Twenty-eight percent of your ramps are missing ramps. So that's just saying you don't have access. Other failures are there's no landing, so you don't have a width by a depth of four feet, which means someone in a wheelchair can't turn easily. Your threshold is not big enough, so it's not three and a half feet, so they can't even get on. Or the slopes are just too severe. This one to the town-owned ramps, we also did an inspection on ten ramps, which were all on Washington Street, and seven out of ten of those failed. So, you know, both of you are insane.
Oh. You're the first to state.
Definitely. Alright, so.
Quick question on that. Are there different guidelines for a town versus state?
No, it's all the same, because it's all ran by ADA and MAAV. So then that takes us to your backlog. So in order to get all these ramps to compliance, it's going to cost you one point eight four million bucks. So that can, and that's only if you're going to repair the ramps to what materials are there today. So if you're going to, you know, change any asphalt to concrete, that's going to increase that backlog somewhat. And then just basic costs, it's usually around three thousand dollars for an asphalt ramp, five thousand for concrete. And then there's two minor fixes. So there could be a ramp that all the slopes, all the measurements are correct, except let's say the pavement, which we call the safe zone. So if the ramp is completely compliant, but that safe zone, which is a four-by-foot entry from the roadway to the ramp, is not correct and it's not meeting the slope that are required, that's about a thousand dollars that you have to fix that. And we'd identify those ramps. And then the other fix is doing the technical warning panel, which is those yellow panels, drip panels that you have. And that's another big failure. And a lot of cities don't have these now, especially on the asphalt ramps. So that's another, you know, if everything meets the criteria, that's a thousand dollars. And then if you can have a compliant ramp, but no D W P or the safe zone, so then that's a combination minor repair. So, you know, you don't have to replace the whole one. And then the steps that we took to create that NPR value was based off some conversations we had with the town of what's their priority for giving these scores. So we actually have seven, and we already have six listed here, but I'll go through all seven. It's condition, proximity to schools is the second. Proximity to the downtown, which is your Washington and Central Street area, approximately to the rail trail, which uses a lot of foot traffic. Your proximity to parks and recreational areas. Your proximity to high-use buildings, which is your churches, your public buildings, public housing, stuff like that. And then if, how bad does the ramp fail? So the slopes are various. So first criteria condition of ramp. So if it's a compliant ramp, we're not going to give it a priority score. It's good. It doesn't need to be touched. As you go to worst failures, so missing landing is very severe. Missing ramp is the most of you, so that's going to get the highest weight on your score. Obstructed ramps, that can either be fixed or temporary, so it could be just a lot of sediment in front of the ramp, or it can be there's a utility pool right in the middle. So all that just goes higher criteria, criteria, a higher score is given. The next one's the proximity to the schools. So every ramp within five hundred feet of the school has the highest point value. Then it goes five hundred, a thousand, then a thousand to fifteen hundred. After that, we don't consider it being that higher priority. Doesn't mean it's not a priority, but just according to the school, just so we can determine.
Why is that? Why schools? I mean, I get schools, but why not council and aging, the library or any other public building?
So that's where the high use score comes in. That's just one of the criterias.
Yeah, the thought is, you have children walking to school, there's a little more foot traffic there perhaps. And so there's a higher weight on the schools than the public schools, which you.
Yeah, so usually like you'll have morning and afternoon, you're going to have a high traffic with kids walking. A lot of people are commuting. That's usually where you're seeing a lot of people walk around. It's usually on the schools. Next one's the downtown, which, you know, it's not very big for Holliston. But basically, the closer you are to downtown, the higher the score, the farther you go out, the lower. And then your rail trail, which probably sees probably a lot of traffic. It's off the roadways, but people want to get to it. They might not want to drive. I know you guys have some parking lots located along them. Maybe sometimes people just want to walk. So that's a high priority where you want connectivity and you want your ramps to be compliant.
So with Central Street connecting the rail trail to downtown, that's going to score relatively high, you're saying, in the criteria, because it's.
And I will show a map showing all of them overlapping. And then basically the same thing for your parks. The closer you are, the higher the score, the farther you get out. And same thing for the high use. So this is the buildings you were talking about. Same thing. The closer they are, they're going to have higher priority. The farther they get out, it gets slower. And then slopes are various. So if the two limits that are very important are for the apron and the landing. So that's, the apron is you going up the ramp, the landing is the top. So that you want a level landing. So anything over two percent is a failure. If, so the way that we scored it, if it's somewhere between four point five and six point five, which is pretty bad, you're going to get hit with a score. And if it's above six point five, which is very severe, you're going to get hit with a two-hundred score. And then for the apron, which is you going up, is an eight point three. Now, if you are somewhere between eleven point nine and fifteen, you consider that pretty severe. And then above fifteen percent, very severe. So those are getting higher weighted. And you can have both, if they're both very severe, you're going to get a score of five hundred. If they're both within the limits, you're going to go to zero. So you can get any combination to both of them. And then this is your overall map. So you can see the blue is all your ramps. There's, I don't know if you can see the lines very well, but those are your existing sidewalks. The orange lines on the map. And like you were saying, in the downtown, very focused. You have schools overlapping, you have parks overlapping, high-use facilities overlapping, and the rail trail. So you're going to see that a lot of your priority failures are going to come from there and work their way out. Which is usually how we do it with communities when we're building a transition plan. We kind of focus on a focal point and say, we're going to try to get this number in this area and then work our way out of that area and then so on and so on. So this is what the priority rating actually comes out. So your black ramps are the ones that are compliant. There's nothing that you need to do today. Then as you come from the outside in, you have your green ramps, which are low priority. Then you get to your orange, which is medium. And then your red, which is a high priority, because you have a lot of facilities meeting that criteria that you set. And then your red, which is a high priority, because you have a lot of facilities meeting that criteria that you said. And then the purple are district. Sidewalks. So sidewalks, we explored approximately fifty miles of public and state sidewalks. Ninety three percent of that was asphalt, just like your ramps. And then the seven percent were concrete, mostly Washington.
Victor, can I interrupt for one second? When you say fifty miles, if you have a segment of roadway that has sidewalks on both sides, you're counting both.
Yeah, so we.
Not fifty miles of roadway.
No, it's fifty miles of sidewalks. So that's both sides. We have on annual report, we have them separated between hot and.
And and that includes local and state.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um. So one thing that we did for analysis for the sidewalks is we gave it a sidewalk condition index. Basically just a score from zero to a hundred. The way that score is determined is we take an overall. Condition of a segment, which is typically block to block. As we walk that segment, we are identifying the stresses, the more distresses you have and the overall condition that you set in the beginning. Determine is that score. So it basically goes from eighty one to a hundred. That's good. There's nothing that you need to do today. Then there's an eighty one to fifty, which is local after repairs, which is basically. There's a segment, you know, the sidewalk's pretty good, but there's a segment that you just need to do. And then anything below a fifty, we're calling a full reconstruction. You know, you need to replace it, remove. Put the same material back or a different material. And. This is your backlog for your sidewalk. Five point five million dollars, but that also includes the cost from the ramps. We're assuming that when you're gonna repair these sidewalk segments, those ramps are going to be included. So it basically goes from fifty to thirty dollars based on what you're repairing. So if it's asphalt's fifteen. If it's um, concrete, you're looking at twenty, thirty, and then twenty five for those combinations. We have. You know, nice little brick accent along a concrete sidewalk.
Is the state included in that number or no?
Yes.
It is not.
Yeah, we'd have to check.
So the five point five million dollar cost is inclusive of the ramp repair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So your average SCI was a sixty nine point three, which is actually above average compared to other communities. Um, but on top of that, you guys have for a community your size, fifty miles of sidewalk is a lot. Um, someone like Douglas was around twelve. Um, so stuff around your size, we we don't usually see that much sidewalk, which is pretty impressive. And overall. That's a pretty good condition. We usually see anywhere from fifty five to fifty eight average. Saying that, sixty one percent of the sidewalks need some type of repair, not full replacement, but at least some type of repair where. Where it goes to that localized. But fifty eight percent of the sidewalks are not compliant. So what that means is they're either not wide enough. Or the slope, which is perpendicular to the road is greater than two percent.
So I don't believe you spoke about ADA accessibility for sidewalks. You certainly did for the ramp. Um, turning platform for accepting a wheelchair and the person who may be assisting the person in the wheelchair. Um, I don't believe you gave detail yet.
Yeah, so yeah, so I can go over that. So compliance for a sidewalk is almost, you can consider it being a landing the whole way. Um. Along the road, whatever the slope of the roadway is, there's not much you can do with that. So you don't take that into consideration. We add it. But there's not much you can do. The big factor is if it's less than four feet. It's not accessible. Um. If there's any utility poles, hydrants. Basically, any hard obstruction, you're gonna have a failure. Um, if it's in very bad condition. So we have a excellent, good fair pour. If it's in poor condition. It's just not rideable. We're gonna give it a failure. And then if the slope perpendicular to the road is greater than two percent, we also give it a failure. Now, I'm not gonna go over the network priority rating again for everything. It's the same for the sidewalks. Except what I just went over for the slopes and conditions. So those slopes and conditions are what's gonna determine the final criteria. And then that's the sidewalk condition in that. So everything that I just explained gives the sidewalk a score. And depending on what score from zero to a hundred it gets, it gets a priority. So the worst the sidewalk condition index, the higher the priority, the best. You're looking at zero. So we take all those criteria for both sidewalks and ramps and we give them a network priority rating overall. So the final thing is we did an equilibrium model. Based on what materials are currently out there, what repairs are needed. How much that's gonna cost and an inflation rate of three point five percent. So using that model, we're able to determine that you would need around six hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. To maintain your current condition. In essence, let's say you didn't put any money into your network today or for the next year. You're looking at around a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars of increase just from inflation. And that's not taking into consideration any material costs that might go up and down. That fluctuates pretty, pretty often. You'll tell it.
Right.
Yeah, um. So just in that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Bill.
Okay.
Thank you, Victor. So in part of our project, we also did, um. We looked at the assessable accessibility um, within the sidewalk network and connectivity. Based on the NPR's office that Victor identified, where we could put new sidewalks. So visually looking at that, the sidewalk mapping. That we developed as part of the inventory, we were able to see whether there were gaps along zones. And so in yellow, we've identified six miles of potential sidewalks. That includes Highland Street, Underwood. Central Church, North Oak, Summer, and Fisk Street. Um, so the cost for sidewalks is running about seventy five dollars a layer. Now, that's a real general cost. It could go as high as thirty percent or if you've got. Right away, eastern issues, gotta take over property, um, you've got permitting. You've got extensive drainage, underground plumbing that you have to do as part of that sidewalk. Um, cut and fill, adding retaining walls. So it could really go up. It could also come down fifteen percent. Um, if you've got to move. That the point of this slide is the, um, any new sidewalks are not included, is baked into in that five point five. Million dollar backlog. So that is a far beyond that backlog. Thanks. So in conclusion, the town should recommend. And we recommend that the town should plan to allocate um, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars to maintain. Today's sidewalk conditions, um, you know, just like any other asset. Um, you know, whether it's our our car, we need to change the oil, you know, go to the dentist, get your teeth cleaned. It's the same idea with sidewalks. Um, so you've got to maintain that. And that's, that's the dollar value to maintain the fifty miles. Um, certainly, you know, building new sidewalks, um, there is, there is grants out there like Complete Streets, which you are pursuing. Um, you know, you're able to get up to four hundred thousand dollars a year for sidewalk improvements. But if you really wanna ask. Long stretches of sidewalk projects that are gonna cost, um, you know, significant dollars, then. You could consider, you know, bonded rates are low, um, a borrowing strategy, you know, to kind of tackle costs of added new sidewalks. Second, the town should assemble ADA task force, including members from the physical jobs, disabled communities. Really to seek input on the plan going forward. That's that's really a title two. Initiative. And, um, you know, it will definitely garner support. Moving forward and it would look favorable with ADA, that's the state MAAB, um, as that plan. Move forward to, you know, work with your senior center, um, housing and, um. And that that'll medical a long ways. Um, three is as you implement the plan. You're gonna reconstruct. Building new sidewalk plants. Make sure that they're adhering to the latest standards, which are in authentic season of a port. You just simply come right out and ask DOT's, um, details for sidewalks, driveways, ramps. You know, not only having that document in the bid package, but also having. A full time inspector helping to understand how to lay out these ramps, um, making sure that, you know. Right, you just the the thickness of a credit card fall could uh, cause the bridge to be out of compliance. Um, and lastly, um, as you're building this, you wanna update that GIS data that that we put together. Um, you know, and maintain that data as you update the plan. Basis for that. What about two more questions?
Okay, thank you. So the way we'll do this will be to have the board ask questions and then. As we wrap up, we'll turn to those listening in, um, at the meeting. So, uh, let the clerk go first. John, do you have questions?
Uh, thank you very much for your presentation. Because, um. I'm just gonna state this falls a little short of what my expectations were for the study. So from where I said, I'm gonna consider this still in draft form. Is there some some steps that I think we need to seriously consider filling in? First of all, is the data that you collected in a GIS format?
Yes, sir.
So it can be exported to the town and used going forward as gentlemen recommend.
Yep, that's great.
One of the things that I think was the spearhead, in my opinion, of what we were asking through this charge to do was to assemble a connectivity plant. And that is to show, as you did, an overlay of the existing sidewalks in our town, what's missing? How do we fill in the gaps of connectivity to bridge those communities, uh, excuse me, those neighborhoods? Um, together. These, I think you all know, there are some areas that just don't have sidewalks. Paulson, like many communities built over a series of generations, some contractors and developers put them in, some didn't, and then. Then you have islands, and that's really what we have right now. So I I feel like the plan is missing that connectivity piece. Like where do we need to put new sidewalks? Let's think one. Uh, the next is, is there a prioritization within the GIS schedule of which sidewalks that you observe need replacement sooner rather than later?
Yes.
Great. And have you in that GIS data assigned which lengths belong to the state and which belongs to the town?
Yes, sir.
So that we can then decouple and assign a value to the state, say, hey, you all pay this bill.
Yep.
Yes, okay. And are you folks working with us on the water pipe replacement plan? Same team or a different team?
Same, same company, different team.
You all talk?
We we do.
Okay.
Plan is to downgrade these recommendations with the water.
Right, perfect. Okay, that's great. Because our our notion was, you know, if you're gonna replace this mile or these miles of pipes. Then it should align with the sidewalks that are part of prioritization as well. So we have a good idea of what the costs are gonna be. Um, the five point five million dollar cost, that is to update or bring up to scale or code whatever. Existing network of of sidewalks and ramps, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's inclusive of state, you said?
Yes.
But we don't have a number on how much it's gonna cost to create any new sidewalk infrastructure where there is not currently, correct?
Correct. We have a rough, we have a rough number. We were tasked to, you know, we're asset managers. So we were tasked to assess the existing sidewalk network and client C D measure it all up and. You know, a small part of our project was to look at gap analysis. We we didn't go out and look at. Um, Underwood and say it's gotta be on the left side, the right side, um, it's gonna cost this much, you need this and this. We haven't done that part of it. Which which it's good question and needs to be done if you want it to be sidewalks, for sure.
Are you saying that's outside your scope and your contract?
Correct.
So I think I'm gonna have to team back with our town administrator and DPW director, because I thought that was very much part of what we were looking to buy out of this. Um, the study. It's a big missing piece for me. Because I do know areas in town that just don't have connectivity. They just don't. So.
It's 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 common with all sidewalk, um, projects that we do this, you know, these islands that you will root to. And it's all, yeah, there's there's connectivity issues, but we're specifically looking at. What it takes to maintain your existing assets, or as from a taxpayer's perspective. If you wanna maintain roads, wanna maintain sidewalks, there's a cost to do that. And that's sort of, um, where we come in and help prioritize. Um, that plan and that plan that. It's certainly. Connectivity is is great, you know, and it can be done and and, you know. So we have to now.
Yeah, I I think the town spoke on that. We we had an interest in developing a network of potentially new sidewalks as part of the study. But as I said, we'll I'll team back on on this with my town minister.
Can I just jump in on that? So you were connected with the folks at Green International to some extent. Or they were connected with you with the Complete Streets tier two work being done in Holliston?
Correct.
Okay. How confident are you through experiences in other communities or with Green International here in Holliston? That the Complete Streets priority list could perform some of that. Gap analysis work for the town of Austin in terms of connecting to, we'll use again the term island out there. How confident is Stantec, your team, in relying on the Complete Streets tier two? Priority list to provide that information that John's asking for, that the expectation for the town to move forward as a town. Is there to have that information? Does Complete Streets serve that role in your professional opinion?
It it it's definitely a beginning step. Um, there were streets that we identified that they have their plan as well. Um, they also calculated as part of this, go through sixteen miles of sidewalks. Uh, where there where there aren't no sidewalks. That included areas where there were no sidewalks. So they certainly have. Um, identified other other gaps if you would. Um, but you know, we we took a preliminary look at, um, the list. Fifty six projects.
Yeah.
We stood on quite a few.
Right.
Um, and certainly the ones that are up at the top, that are part of the bio organization. They more or less up there with what we have, um, on a beach of corridors.
Yeah, I'm interested to come back to that, but I wanna jump ahead of Ben's questions. Okay. Um, sorry, are you all set, John? Did you have any questions?
So, um, thank you both for coming. Um, I've certainly interacted with you. I remember when you came out on the. Washington Street, I was with you guys for for a little while, watching you do, uh, do your work. And it's very, there's a lot, lot, uh, entailed. In that, um, I have a a question and a comment here. And so my question for you is. Um, I'm a little like, I wanna understand when you're talking about the six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I believe you said, to maintain condition. Is that? Could you elaborate a little bit more about that? I just wanna kind of understand what you mean by maintaining conditioning. Just mean having the existing. Material or do you mean like, I mean, because if it's not compliant, we don't wanna maintain a non-compliant. Condition. I mean, I guess that's where I'm getting a little mixed up.
So, yeah, so basically that's six, so that sixty nine point three.
Yeah.
Is your average network rating.
Right.
That six thirty is to maintain that score. So. All the sidewalks are deteriorating over time.
Sure.
Uh, as well as the ramps. It's not like roads is not as fast, but they're still deteriorating. And then costs. To maintain those go up and down, they fluctuate, but for the most part, they get more expensive as usual. So what that six thirty does keeps you from falling below that sixty nine point three.
Sure.
So it it it's gonna bring you up a little bit.
Okay.
But not at a rapid rate where you're seeing improvement and you're seeing the backlog completely go down.
So kind of what you're saying is is that if we, if if your professional opinion is, is that. The amount of money we need to spend, basically, if we repaired, I'm making it up, Central Street, I'm not saying that's the wrong, but if we said we're gonna repair that. There might be something else down in another area that might kind of deteriorate somewhat because we're not being able to maintain the network. Fast enough because of the the natural deterioration rate of other parts. Is that kind of what you're saying in effect? So we'd be fixing one, we'd be playing kind of almost like a mole, because one would pop up that wasn't on the list. So we'd be fixing one, we'd be playing kind of almost like a mole, because one would pop up that wasn't on the list and now it's because of the natural.
And that's why we do the network priority and put that sidewalk condition into the equation.
Sure.
Um, good. For most towns, they're going to do worst case, and whatever you're getting the most calls first. That's not always the highest priority, that's not always going to help you. But, you know, that 630 is just to keep you at that level, the backlog still might increase, but you're going to be at that same condition.
Okay. So, uh, thank you. Um, my, my comment here is, is more sort of a general comment to everyone, I guess, for the town, is that I think what, what I'm seeing from this, and I think is an important thing to take from it, is that we are going to be receiving information from you data for GIS. And I think what's important for us as a community to do is to make sure that we take that data and turn it into something living that we can maintain and that we can make sure is part of our infrastructure maintenance going forward. I think one of my concerns is that I want to make sure that we are doing right by the community to make sure that we are keeping the infrastructure up to, up to where it should be, up to the standards that we have in this community. And I, I think what we need to do, what I'd like to see, um, I've said it before, is I'd love to see some sort of an engineer or some sort of maintenance plan in, in town to sort of say, this is the person who's going to take care of this information, maintain this data as we get it from, uh, from your, from your company, the water, uh, infrastructure information and for road conditions and things like that. I'd love to see that all being integrated so that way we can make informed decisions in the conditions of our community. And then the community can have input if they feel that there's opportunities or places that we should put additional assets. I think it's important, you know, I, 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 I understand where, you know, where John's coming from, and I think he makes a great point that we, you know, it's very important that we, we do things to keep connectivity and find it where we need to. But I also think it's important for the community to be able to chime in and say, hey, this is, this is what we want to do. This is what we think is important. So that way people have the chance to, uh, to speak up. So, and, and beyond just a study from you, because you're not necessarily part of the community, but you're giving us some more information. So. Um, thank you very much for coming in and presenting this to us. I just, I appreciate it. Thank you, people.
So, um, there's a tremendous amount of detail, and we're not surprised that this board, um, prior board, the town administrator, and many others have set this as a priority for our community, based in large part because of feedback we've had from the community. Um, and then other places as well. So, um, I didn't see it as doing, my saw it as good information that we now need to act on. So first and foremost, the information that you have in here of the 10 state-owned ramps, and I believe you have it summarized here as 1.8 miles of sidewalk that's state-owned, on state-owned roadway. Uh, and I think in here again, in your draft, you put the cost estimate at around $400,000. That's very valuable information for the town of Holliston. So I'm just going to turn to the town administrator again. And, you know, when the time comes, Travis, and we're going to meet with DOT in the fall, that is something we tentatively had discussed. This is really important information that we make sure we present at that meeting so that DOT is aware of the work StanTech's done, and we can raise this to the level of, of their attention in person here in, in town hall meeting with, with DOT. So that's a plan that we had in place. This timing is great. It's going to help us in that conversation. Um, I feel a little bit differently than John in terms of the connectivity piece. I, I understand where he's coming from entirely. I've always viewed the Complete Streets as the document or the report Tier Two, um, as the way in which we can identify new broad, big picture, and the StanTech as repair and maintenance. That's sort of how in my mind I, I view this. So I definitely look at the Complete Streets and see there 56, as you said, projects there that really do a tremendous job of, of providing more new access. And then I look to what you've done to say maintenance and repair. I'm looking for how we dovetail those two together moving forward. You've done it a little bit here, connecting the information, but I'm very interested to know what your recommendation to the town is for next steps for us. So $630,000, are we there in FY '22? We have October town meeting.
The placeholder numbers we had, I put in the five-year capital plan, um, knowing that we were going to be getting the StanTech report and all that, we were going to be completing Green International's uh, work on Complete Streets. I think we have a placeholder of $400,000 per year. Um, and I think to, um, uh, Mr. Cronin's point from earlier, you know, one of the important things, and to your point also on our meeting with Mass DOT, which is a follow-up, obviously, you mean to separate, you know, what is on this list that we're bringing to the state? And what is on this list that is in our, you know, responsibility to be bringing to, to upcoming town meetings? So from a five-year capital update perspective, most likely what I need to be doing, um, is breaking out that 600 um, some odd thousand dollars into what we need to plan for, you know, whether it be borrowing, capital expenditure, free cash. Um, and then also sort of separating what we will most likely be bringing to the state and trying to plan with them to cover what we think is under their control.
Can you bring back up the, the slide that had the GIS spatial overlay?
Nowhere it was roughly.
It was roughly slide four or five.
See. I'll say nine. All right.
Scrolling up, scrolling up. The, the one with Hall, by the way.
It was actually called GIS spatial overlay.
Yeah, that's.
All right. Uh, we both. Uh, so when I look at the, Travis, I know that map. I know it from Complete Streets. So, uh, I understand the piece about the state. Um, the state doesn't own, uh, any of what's there where the purple meets the red meets the yellow meets the blue. That's all downtown. Uh, and so then my next question, and I'm not challenging you, Travis, I'm just saying, I, I know that map because I've seen it already with Complete Streets. So my next question is, how do we identify from that map their actual projects? So I'm familiar again with Complete Streets where they're listed out. If I go there, I'm pretty sure I'm looking at project number, um, from Complete Streets, project number 11 as one of, as one of those dots. How do we take that?
Yes.
And say, well, we know it's an issue from repair and maintenance, but we also know it's an issue in terms of including connectivity. Um, and match them up a little bit more precisely.
So we do have the, I'm correcting if I'm wrong, we do have all of the Complete Street projects on GIS.
Okay.
Um, so that's another layer that you can have part of this.
Okay.
Um, and then having that and having the NPR score for all those assets, you can basically match high priority, Complete Streets.
Who is doing that work?
The matching notes.
Yeah, we, we have, we have not done that.
Okay. Okay.
We have those layers available to deliver.
We do. We have. It's a simple exercise. I mean, we have the NPR value.
Yep.
To every sidewalk polygon, every block to block, I mean, um.
And then we have the center line for roadway for Complete Streets.
Yeah.
Start and then beginning and ending.
Okay. All right.
But it's ultimately up to you guys. I mean, we, you know, we could, we could, we could certainly map it out and look at it, like, and, and compare the red points and the red sidewalks, um, to the, to the Complete Streets priorities.
I mean, I, I 99% sure I'm looking at project number 27 from Complete Streets, right there, smack dab in the middle of, of, of the red by the trail, by the schools, which is to improve the Washington Street, Linden Street crosswalk. So to me, that seems like the good next step for the town of Holliston as we head into October, the latest town meeting to prepare that. And also as we look at Complete Streets Tier Three, which will apply for, you mentioned grant funding is being one of the ways in which this work gets done. Um, so that, that makes the logical next step for me. Um, coming back to your other recommendations about the ADA task force. You said someone from the senior center, do you, so I guess that's a question for Travis. Um, how and when do we create an ADA task force? Is there an interest from the board to do that?
It's just a town administrator slash HTR director. It's the perfect timing to roll that up.
Yeah, I wasn't, I actually wasn't seeing this. I think, not to say that it's not an immediate priority, but it takes some time to get a good.
I'm not joking. I think that is the perfect, um, most likely point person to allow us to have a little bit more.
You have the new deputy.
Yes, absolutely. Both critical hierarchies to, to what that would be.
Okay.
Um, and I think, I, I mean, I like the idea very much of, of making sure the COA is involved, reaching out to the housing authority, housing trust as well. Uh, I think there's quite a few players that would get involved. Uh, it sounds like StanTech can help us sort of tell how that should be framed as well.
Yeah, no, they, the ADA task force is going to help you determine what you want to do. But you also want to have someone in there that's going to review the work after it's completed. Um, the big thing is going forward, anything that's constructed new or replaced is put back correctly with the standards that we provide.
Right. And so we have a large project underway, about to be underway, well underway in Mudville. And so, um, I'm going to assume that the, the, these, this appendix C guidance that's in the document is being used for that project. So that the new sidewalks and crosswalks and ramps that are going to be installed in the large Mudville project um, meet the guidance, follow the guidance in appendix C. Sort of putting that out there as an assumption. Okay.
It likely does. It's, it's, it's the enforcement. Like, you can have the best spec, but if you're not enforcing regulations, the contractor will try to get away with some of the things. So, you know, it's really the enforcement, our, our road guidelines. You know, have a full-time inspector watching that.
When, when do we expect the water pipe replacements to? Yeah, yeah.
Have you got a more recent date?
I met with him last week. We don't have a final date, but the expectation was hopefully by October town meeting, but I can, I'll confirm an actual date for you.
Sean had a follow-up call with him last week, but doesn't have a specific date at the moment, is what Sean just said from the back of the room, and he will, I'll follow up next week.
Again, it goes back to my remarks with the gentleman that at some point those two plans need to talk. They got to almost become one, if you think about it, in terms of planning and costs, so that the town has a general understanding of the long-term investment. And his team pointed out, what are we facing potentially this fall? So, if there's anything we can extract from that pipe replacement plan with this purpose, now's the time to start talking, I think.
I agree. And you mentioned the capital plan that you have, it was five years. Even that, even that can be considered in this. Because sometimes you want to get to these sidewalks and ramps before you're going to pay the right.
Yeah, that's a great point, because, you know, anytime you do any resurfacing project, you are required by ADA to bring up any ramp that's adjacent to that major alteration. Um, and so those ramps, if you have a capital plan, those ramps, they may have a low priority, but a part of your plan. So you got to kind of switch the schedules on those, which is can be done.
Can we, um, through you Tina, can we consider this report draft until we fill in some of these holes that we're talking about? Is that acceptable to you folks?
Sure. Sure. I mean, we have, we've given you a draft. Um, you know, I know that our budget is, is more or less exhausted. I mean, we can suddenly output um, a plan and kind of spit out what the, you know, what $630,000 buys you every year in that order. Um, you know, but it's, it still needs kind of the, no, this is what our capital plan is doing. This is what, you know, we don't, we're Complete Streets. It kind of needs to kind of just be a little mess and kind of get a little more input, whether, you know, work on some way. COA, you know, and just kind of, um, kind of build that. Um, you know, right now it's kind of a computer-generated output. You know, based on the optimization that we kind of looked at. And if we could certainly spit that out, we can, we can make, um, we can export all the state data, um, before you meet with them. That's an easy export, um, Excel file has all the backup of all the measurements, what we measured at a smart level, when what's on, what's, what's not compliant.
I, I agree. I, I think the data is there. You did it. It's just presentation. I think what you've done is you've given me, in my estimation, about 75% what I want. The 25% is still on the computer, I think. And you probably owe me a little bit more information about how to bring that 25%, which is the connectivity into the model. It's there. You did it. Just have to write it, give me some more information to complete. It's called section six on this report. That's all I see. And then allow it to land into the pipe replacement, which I think you could do, as long as you talk to colleagues. Does that make sense, Charles?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, a big part of this, like Ben alluded to, it's all in GIS, so it's, it's, it's easy, right? So it's all spatial, which you haven't seen media, which really appreciated, but it's all.
That's, that to me is worth a weight of gold, because we can turn that product over to the new DPW, um, deputy director as, as, as an action plan. Here you go. Here's a game plan for next, next year is for sidewalks and water pipe replacements and so forth. That's what we've been creating, is that kind of a, a view.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
Any comments, Ben?
Uh, no.
Okay. I mean, I still feel like there's a project out there. There are several projects out there that I see fully supported by, I know there's more information. I, I hear what you're saying. Uh, but I absolutely see that there are several projects out there that the town can advance now with the information that we have. So my question is, how does this board get to appointment something? How does this board get to that point where we are, uh, preparing something potentially for October town meeting, where we are advancing projects? There's no doubt around the fact that we want this as a community and, and, as a board. And so, um, I'd like to take, take that next step.
Starting as early as next week, we'll start to put planning of, of the warrant on your weekly agendas. Um, and I think that would be the time to start it. I think, you know, I'll follow up with this gentleman. Um, while Mr. Cronin is asking about adding sort of the connectivity piece, um, you know, I think some of it too, from a capital planning perspective, is, you know, some of the metrics they showed on how much it costs per linear foot, those types of things. When the projects for connectivity are identified, we can put those in the pipeline of capital planning, know what they cost, cost them on ourselves with the data that we have, um, from this. So I think, you know, I think we are close and, um, I think we have information that as soon as we start talking warrant, um, between this and also Complete Streets, which is a lot of data as well. Um, I think we're going to find some low hanging fruit, certainly.
Okay. All right. Well, I think there are no more questions from the board. Uh, turn to the audience here in the room. If there are any questions. Seeing none, I'm going to turn to the Zoom call. Um, we have one hand up. So Michelle, go ahead and introduce yourself. What's your name and address and ask your question. I just need you to unmute. Can't hear you, Michelle.
There you go. Michelle Zimer, 583 Winter Street. So I've been making notes as, as I go along, and then they've been answered and I've been crossing them out. So just bear with me for a few seconds while I figure this out. Um, I, I had a question. You, um, when you talk about the new deputy director, is that person going to act as a town engineer? I had that question first, because I've, I've talked to Ben and Travis and Sean about my personal, um, belief that we need a town engineer. And when you're talking about GIS and things like this, I really think it would be helpful. And I was just wondering that to begin with.
Michelle, I'll take that. And then Travis, fill in any details that I leave out. The job description that has been posted includes as a preferred uh, experience for a professional engineer, but it would be a complement to a potential future hire, not a replacement. I, I believe that's how we have.
It is not a requirement of the posting. Uh, the, the conversations that we've had about a town engineer, which Michelle and Ben, uh, as Finn calmly has also been involved in, um, is not going to be solved through this posting. Um, we may be able to get somebody with some engineering background, but it would not most likely give the town, uh, a dedicated town engineer, which it hasn't had for over 20 years now.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll have this discussion later then. I, I'm not done. I'm not done with that conversation.
Um, well, Michelle, I'm sorry, John has something to add to.
To your point, Michelle, before we move on, Travis, have we explored the possibility of a, a shared engineer service with any other communities? Um, I know we've talked about regionalizations for, you said dispatch recently. We do have a dog officer. Is there any neighboring town that might have that kind of service that we could bundle up on?
Just certainly begin to look. I have not had any conversations on that one of all of the regionalization conversations I've had recently, but I mean, I'm assuming all regionalizations, all that.
I, I, you know, Michelle, I like the question because I've, I've also thought the same thing, but I, I'm not sure it's a full-time job. That, that was always the issue. Um, we have enough work for a DPW director, deputy DPW director. Our, our town's just not big enough to really support, I think, a full-time engineer. Um, that's just my opinion, especially with major state roadways, uh, traversing through our town, which are the responsibility of engineers that are paid by the state. So that's why I bring up the idea of maybe contracting or doing some kind of regional service, uh, job share. So, sorry, Michelle, sorry.
Um, and my other question was more about the the condition of the sidewalks. Um, I'm sorry, I was seeing backs of heads, so I wasn't sure who was talking. Um, for replacement of sidewalks, is it because of the condition of the sidewalks? Or do sidewalks have to be replaced because they're not ADA compliant?
Both. So what, if they're not compliant?
Talk to the mic, sorry.
Oh, sorry. So if they're not compliant, um, they have to be replaced, so that's that's a full, just close straight to a zero. But if they're in bad condition, they also have to be replaced. Does that answer your question?
It does. And then, so my question about the sidewalks that aren't ADA compliant, because to me, that would require more. Um, I don't know technically what it's called, site work, you know, regrading, maybe widening the sidewalks. Um, does that require like taking of people's property to widen them? You you were, you walk the sidewalks. Are they town, are they on town property, or are they going to be taking people's front lawns?
For for the most part, I can't think of an instance where I saw existing sidewalk that would take town property. Um, the biggest issue in town, I'm sorry, on private property. Um, the biggest issue in town wasn't really the width of sidewalk, for the most part. It was overall condition was the failure.
Okay.
So I can't say off the top of my head that there was an instance where I saw that someone's property would have to be taken in order to replace.
Okay, thank you.
The potential's always there. Yeah, yeah, the potential's always there.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
All set, Michelle?
Yes, thank you. One other thing, if you have, um, any, um, reports or anything on, um. Drag a blank, the the streets.
You're asking me, Michelle? Yes.
Inferred streets. Could you send it to the finance committee? Any reports you have?
Yeah, well, we have to submit it first to the state and have it approved, but once it's an approved document, I think that, yeah, I mean, we can send it at any point. It's not yet an approved document by DOT, so it's in draft form.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all set. Uh, then we have Vin Murphy. Go ahead and introduce your name and and your address, Vin.
Yeah, hi, Vin Murphy, four thirty-two Norfolk Street. So I'm also on the FinCon. Just had a couple of questions on the slide deck you showed. One being, if you go back to the deck, it was looking at the schools. You had schools in two places that I'm not aware we had schools. One being at the close to Millis side, and the other one was close to the Med Milford side. And it was like, I don't understand, I didn't think we had schools there, but I. Yeah, those corners, the not the one, two center ones, but the ones in the two corners.
So I believe.
One's a university, a college, Northeastern?
Uh, Northeastern, isn't that the place where they have the dead bodies? Like, next to the rail trail? I say that because it's.
It's a research.
Because every great boy says that, Vin, on their way home from school.
I'm sure they do.
Uh, so my question would be, is that not senior center and a group home? Because I know that where you're looking at the bottom right, heading into, right off the map, the red goes right off the map, that's the vicinity of the senior center. And the bottom, as I'm looking at the bottom left, the the full dot at the bottom there, that is, there's a a large group home over there. So I'm wondering if proximity to schools is also group homes and.
So this is based off the donation that the parcels have? So it's zoned as a school.
Oh, okay, okay. I recognize I recognize those as the council on age, uh, that's sorry, the senior center and a group home. So I see this as vulnerable users, but you're saying they're identified on some.
Yeah, so the parcel, the parcel is zoned as a school, so that's that's all we got this day.
Think the, uh, council of aging or senior centers more to the center down. It's, I just, um, rather than that corner, because that seems more of the Millis Sherburne side. The other thing, if you go two slides down, um, you have pink, that one. And I was just wondering, for that slide, you have Potoma and Lake Winthrop. I believe that's the one I was, no, the other, um, high use facility, yeah, that one. And it was pink. So why did you have those as a parks as opposed to high use facilities? I I don't know what the distinction is between a high use facility versus a park, just because one started park, the other one's like Potoma.
So.
Potoma Park.
So again, this is all within zoning, so whatever the zone called for, um, basically all we got this information.
Okay.
Thank you, Victor. All set, Ben?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see any other hands up at this point in time, so we're gonna wrap up the discussion on the sidewalks. Thank you very much for taking the time to go over such detailed.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Really appreciate it.
All right, so we're gonna move on on the agenda tonight. Uh, we have a hearing. It was scheduled to start at seven forty-five. We're gonna open the hearing with the clerk screening the. At eight fifteen. Yes, please.
Move to, uh. Public hearing to approve the change in manager request for mall liquors doing business with some liquor is located at fifteen sixty-six Washington Street. For Nicole Cannon Geiser to be the manager of record.
Okay, so the hearing is now open.
Second amendment.
Uh, sorry, uh, we have a motion. It'll take a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, we have a second. All in favor, I, the hearing is now open. And, um, I have no questions or comments. The information's been presented. Ben, John?
Somebody trying to get our attention. I can't tell which agenda.
So I'm just Nicole Cannon Geiser.
Oh, Nicole, you're listed as Thomas. That's why we were kind of making the connection.
I know, I couldn't change it. I tried, and I like signed out, and it wouldn't let me, so I just went with it.
Okay. Nicole, were you prepared to to make a statement about it? You don't have to, but, uh, you're unmuted, so now's your opportunity.
I did not have one prepared. I did not know I needed one.
Not need one at all. Nice to see you. Uh, if we have questions, we'll ask you, but otherwise, uh, anyone with any comments or questions during the public hearing on the change in management at Lincoln Liquors? Okay, so Travis, you are looking for board approval of the change in management?
Yes, I can read a motion if you'd like, or can, whichever you prefer.
Seeing no questions or comments on on this, um, vote, I think we're ready to forward the motion.
I just wanna state that, uh, the applicant has gone through a background check completed by the Hall's and his department.
Okay, thank you. Great. We're just gonna find the motion to read, Nicole. Hang on one second. It's a detailed application, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little much.
ABCC runs a tight ship.
I mean, just renewed a couple passports for a few people in my family. It's say it's 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 up there.
Okay, I will, um.
All right, so, go ahead, Travis.
So, uh, the motion would be to move to approve the change of manager request for mall liquors DBA Lincoln Liquors located at fifteen sixty-six Washington Street. For Nicole Cannon Geiser to be the manager of record.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, I, that carries, Nicole. Congratulations. Thanks for showing up. Okay, good luck with your new position.
Thank you so much.
And take care. All right, so we're gonna, uh, I'll take and entertain a motion to close the hearing at eight nineteen.
Motion to close the liquor hearing. I will second it.
All in favor, aye. Motion carries, and the hearing is closed, so we're gonna move on to the first of four, uh, fourth items. Agenda, the CARES Act and ARPA programmatic update. We have recommendations from our ARPA steering group. That will be presented, I believe, by Amanda Black there, Chief Cassidy.
Um, I was just gonna give a quick update. We'll have Chief Cassidy with us, um, who can give any, um, COVID related updates that you're looking for. Um, and then we have two items. The ARPA steering group has convened at its first meeting, and has two more schedules. Get through the list of seventeen requests that we received by the soft deadline of August second. The ARPA steering group did make two recommendations to the select board, which we can go through tonight. Um, and the schools are here, uh, for their request in person. Should you have any questions? Um, so if you want the COVID update first, I'll just, you guys, the other, otherwise we have schools with us, we can get in and out.
Uh, well, we'll do that then. So why don't we start with the two recommendations from the steering group? I'm getting a vigorous nodding on that. Um, so, uh.
Sure. You coming up?
Sure.
All right, so I broken down the, the list, um, and then we will, um, we'll bring the schools up for for theirs, since they're here with you. Wrote down, um, color coded the request that, uh, they went through. Try to zone in here, zoom in here a little bit. So, uh, the two requests at the top were unanimously, uh, recommended for approval. Um, their recommendation is in favor for the select board to approve. Um, I also have three placeholders here that came from Emergency Management Director Chief, uh, Michael Cassidy. Um, factoring those in, um, because we are considering them to be potential needs, so that it should be considered in the grand scheme of things. Everything here in the middle, uh, in yellow, uh, these individuals have been given times or reached out to to schedule time to appear in front of. The ARPA steering group, um, because there were some additional questions, uh, that the group had. So that would be Jackie Weiner. Lisa Fenn Services to request, Leslie McDonald from, um. Uh, the, uh, library, uh, with a request, Lisa Borchetta, the director of the Hollis and C O A, who has two requests that are grouped here. I do have a correction, uh, for the home repair program in FY twenty-two, because the online version was for a higher amount. Um, I rounded up. And then three requests from the chair of the Hollis and Trails Committee, uh, Robert Whiteneck, and then an individual, uh, who I've not spoken with yet. Um, from a group, uh, that I'm not familiar with, did get her a question, and so we'll try to schedule her in front of the ARPA steering group as well. They meet, um, I believe it is a week from this Wednesday. Or is it this Wednesday?
It's this one.
It's this Wednesday. Thank you, Cynthia, a member of the, uh, ARPA steering group. Um, and so we will hear from Jackie Weiner, Leslie McDonald, and Lisa Borchetta this Wednesday, and then we have a date for the rest to make sure we do the entire list. Everything else below is grouped in this timeline. This is from the facilities manager, the emergency manager, director, and myself. And these are all for consideration before, um, the October town meeting warrant closes, and that's how we've sort of tried to prioritize, um, based on timing. So with that, um, I will be happy to get into the viewpoint with Dennis Quaid request. Um, but as I said, uh, we have the superintendent and the chair of the school committee with us to go through the, uh, if you have any questions on the full day kindergarten.
Why don't we both?
I just have one quick question. Um, how how long does the ARPA money last for?
So from an operational standpoint, it would be three fiscal years, so FY twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. There is a time period that lasts five fiscal years, which we're generally considering to be for capital requests, because of duration and May tech, so for infrastructure component of ARPA. Um, because of the fact that those expenditures will often take quite a bit of time to close out, there is a time period for ARPA that actually lasts five fiscal years.
Gotcha. Excellent. Thank you.
So I'm gonna request that we start first with this Hollis and School Committee presentation and request and discussion, and then we'll circle back around to viewpoint. So we're gonna welcome to the table those from the schools, the superintendent, Dr. Cuska, and we have the chair, Cynthia Stenekruss.
See the roads or align the horns?
So we're happy to hear your request and background information.
Thank you. Um, I'm actually allow Dr. Cuska, it's her request to move us forward in this direction. So I I hope you saw my presentation ahead of time, I didn't have any questions on that, or any slides the public to see. But really, it came down to picking who we are as a community. Shortly after I arrived here, I I noticed some data that we have some equity issues with our schools related to students and how they enter kindergarten. Um, most recently, we determined that we are Hollis is now one of only thirty-one communities in the entire state that does not pay for full day K. That was concerning to me from a community standpoint, and now I have COVID on top of that, so now you have families that were already struggling to pay for it. We've got another layer of trauma, and people that potentially are out of work or had to cut down on hours because they had childcare issues with COVID and so forth. So that seemed to me a real priority with our ARPA funds to move this initiative forward. Is something that I know that the school committee has put forward for many years, and this time the town did not have a long range plan for. Coming to any way to boost fruition. To me, it's a real justifiable reason to use funds that are one time funds, but I put together a five year proposal of how I would gradually get this into the school budget. So that this would offset it over multiple years. We'd get the back from that we could out of ARPA funding for FY twenty-two, three, and four. Starting with, we would ask for full funding of six hundred fifty thousand for year one. Year two, we would ask for seventy-five percent. The schools would offset twenty-five percent. My plan would be to use some of our SR two and three funds that we've been holding inside for reasons like this. Year three, moving to fifty fifty, fifty percent coming from ARPA, and the other fifty again from SR three funds. After that, I would suppose that we would hold and set aside what we currently have in our revolving kindergarten fund. And that would literally offset quite a bit of that in year four. So long range, we have a sustainable plan. Ultimately, it does have to get worked into the overall school budget. But it buys us almost five fiscal years to do so, and I think that's really not only a sustainable way. Kind of help us with the equity issue for our kindergarten students coming in. We still have, um, about eight percent of our students are half day. And when I surveyed families, my concern was that seventy-nine percent of that eight percent of students, which is about, I think it was seventeen kids this year. But seventy-nine percent of those students, the family said that they either couldn't afford it or would struggle to afford it. So we, certainly we have equity there, but even of the ninety-three percent of full day kids that were signed up for this year. Sixty-three percent of those families said they would somewhat struggle, very much struggle, or the only reason they're able to do it is because their shell isn't on a IP. Or they're free to reduce, so they could actually offset it that way. So those numbers really. Struck me as much bigger than just that eight percent than equity issue for the whole town. And every year, moving forward, this would offset funding for paying families that, right now, we have over two hundred families just for the next school year. So we're looking every year beyond well over two hundred families. That would be positively a path. It would certainly help with the COVID trauma that we're dealing with, but long term, it would put your town in a much better stability. I also know that one of the survey comments that I got from families was. We didn't know this when we signed up for when we moved to Holliston. We just assumed a town like Holliston would have this. And they said maybe they wanted to move here, literally. So think about your real estate as well. When you look at that number dwindling out to thirty-one, I think it was thirty-eight or more, um, two years ago, so just in two years, that are more talented. Offset full day K, so we're getting a much smaller number every year. And if you look at that, if I'm one of the neighboring communities, and many of them on the list that you saw in my presentation of our surrounding communities, are funding full day kindergarten totally. I might decide as a family member coming in not to move to Holliston for that reason, so, you know, there are just multiple reasons. But for me, it's about how can we help our struggling families, but also provide equity to our kindergarten students overall.
Um. I I I was really impressed by the presentation that you gave to the steering group. I thought you had tremendous detail. I thought you, um. Justified the requests from all different fronts. I will say there was only one surprising comment that I didn't hear, which was. The additional daycare costs that a family that puts their child into half day has to then absorb. As a parent of four children, I've lived through this four times, um, and I I I thought that that was a relevant point, too, that if you're not in full day. Kindergarten, you're paying often if you're working, as we were at the time, and still today, whenever, but when they were in kindergarten, paying daycare costs because they're not in full day kindergarten. So, um, I I.
Some of those parents in some of the comments were that they, the reason they didn't put them in full day is because they are home during the day. So some of them, that would be a reason why not to pay for kindergarten. It wasn't the daycare. But to your point, I would actually worry even more so about the full day parents, because they were also paying for extended care. Many of the parents said the reason that they have to find full day is because they do need daycare, but that's not long enough, so they're also doing our extended day or other programs in the town. So those families are getting hit two or three times, you know, and then we have a family with twins. I don't think we have any triplets, but they, you know. So I know to some three thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars a year may not seem like a lot, but when you think of that in addition to your taxes and all these other things that families are funding.
John, you were at the steering group meeting.
I was. Um, so, you know, one of the questions I'd like you to directly address is the reason why federal grant money right now is the answer to this problem.
If we don't use federal funding, I don't have any answer for you, because as I think Cynthia told me that we started in two thousand fifteen and even before that.
We had a task force in two thousand fifteen that overwhelmingly the community supported that we have full day kindergarten.
If if, the reason I'm asking the question, with respect, yeah, what I'd like to do is kind of parse the two issues. There's the policy question, which we're not here to really discuss, because that's not our purview. But there's the urgent issue. We have a pandemic. It's impacting learning, specifically young kids trying to get into the schools. Uh, at a young age, this money will help them, because without it, with the pandemic, they're in a more disadvantaged perspective. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
That's where I wanna go with this, with all due respect, because to me, on the call last week, I made that point, there are two issues here. There's the era now. There are two issues here. There's the era now, which we can solve with this. And then there's the five-year thing. What are we going to do when the money runs out? That's a different conversation. So that's what I wanted to get to is the, you know, where's the empirical justification we heard about why the money's needed now for these kids?
Yes, and I don't have the slide in front of me. I don't know if you want to pull it up. And there was a slide in there about our current preschool fund, our current kindergarteners. Was it sixteen percent of them did attend preschool last year? I could be off on my numbers because a lot of that are in the position. So now you look at those kindergarteners that, of that eight percent of seventeen students that may attend half-day if we don't do this model. Some of those kids also didn't attend preschool. So now it's two years of that. We're going to be spending a lot more money to recoup that learning over multiple years. So if you start, I mean, I can't give you the numbers for that. It's really, it would vary, but the more regression that students have or that loss of learning by not entering preschool or going to half-day kindergarten, they could end up at an I E P over one or two years for a student that may not need an I E P. And those expenses just keep building into our budget. We're going to be spending the money one way or the other, but this is a sustainable plan to get us there immediately.
That, that was compelling to me when, when the doctor explained some of the impacts that Holliston kids at that's young age are having under pandemic. This, this became about as much of a ground balls you get with respect to the request for ARPA. And I do remember saying during the conversation, we'll get to the reckoning in five years. We know it's coming. That's a whole different community conversation. And we understand that not just with this request, and I think Travis and the other members of the steering group know it. There are elements of any grant, you have to wonder what happens when the money runs out. This is a large one. We get it. Our eyes are open. We had that conversation. I'm very comfortable voting for this today. To me, it's, it's an easy one. Anything you can do with the federal money, help the kids right now. Anything is just first, 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 first vote is easiest one as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, and that's why I didn't ask you for six hundred fifty thousand for the next three years because I know what a huge ask that is. So as I was driving to work one day, I thought, wait a minute, what can we do together collaboratively with the school committee? What can I do with the S R two and three funds that Keith and I have set aside? And we don't know the unknowns that we're going to be dealing with over the next couple of years. So we have tried to set aside a large amount of those two pockets of money as well, and barring other emergencies that I can't foresee without that, first of all, I do think that that's a reasonable plan to help offset some that we don't have to ask for six hundred fifty thousand for three years and have this gradual sustainability.
I just want to add, so thi- this presentation was given to the ARPA steering group, was then covered in the Holliston reporter as well. So I have it up there if anybody wants to see it, but it's been covered in a public meeting as well.
So I, I, I think, yeah, I think it's a no-brainer to, that this is something that, you know, could clearly benefit the community and some kids who are very vulnerable. I think I just need to have, I mean, it's, you know, I, I, I want to support it. I do. It's just I want to make sure you, you know, are you comfortable with a plan for funding it down the road? You know, because, you know, going backwards is not really something that's, it's easy to do in these particular cases. And suddenly we can't start saying, okay, now we are going to charge again. We don't want to go there. That's not the goal. That's not what we want to do. Are you comfortable? I mean, it's your plan. I'm not. Yeah, you don't have to get into details, but are you comfortable and you feel like, you know, we can get there within, you know, what you have and a plan to get to that point in the future to collect to fund it?
Given that I'm just finishing my first year here, I feel confident that that's the best route that I can go as a superintendent to get us there. And I'm willing to do the hard work and sacrifice with the school committee to get there. So it may mean having to think creatively with the budget that we have for the next few years. But I feel like it's a reasonable, at least for the next four years, I think we can really master that and maximize what we do have in all the grant funds. So it's year five when I really have to hit the
You can, you can, you can do a lot of thinking about it.
And I have time to think about all of that.
Time to, to plan and to, to, okay.
And, and you have a partnership.
Yeah.
Between the finance committee and the, and the select board, you have partners for that five-year-out decision. And we have a town administrator who is demonstrating strongly that skill and ability to do the long-range planning. So you are not alone.
Exactly. And I do, and I feel like just in the one year I've been here, certainly Travis and I have worked incredibly collaboratively together. It's like what's been very supportive of our requests. I understand and really believe that you want to do what's best for the schools, even though we do take the largest amount of money. I know that. But it truly is. I mean, whatever is good for the schools is good for the community. It improves our real estate. As I mentioned, families hearing that now we are one of the, not one of those thirty-one communities will now see that this might be another viable option to move to if they were on the fence and looking at.
Yeah, I was just going to challenge Ben a little bit on the, on the question. Is, is the, is the question to the school superintendent, is, is she prepared to fund or find a path to funding this when the federal grant money ends? Is that a conditional point or just an open-ended point?
It's more of an open-ended point. I mean, that I, I feel that it's important just to, I, I just want to feel
Okay, because there was a similar question on the call last week, and I had a problem with it because I don't think we can put the pressure on that kind of a solution, especially one of that scale and insinuate that any town budget can simply absorb what's basically a million dollars of costs. It's a tall ask.
Sure.
You know, and, and I think when that time comes or as it comes, and if we're talking planning rather than financially, you know, giving up something to, to get this done, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a paradigm, I think is a little unfair right now because all we're doing is we're green-lighting a, a federal grant opportunity to solve a problem for the next five years with our eyes wide open. And this is what I said last week. What does that mean? It means she's going to do the best she can. I'm pretty sure she can't find a million dollars right now in her budget to say, let's make it happen in year five. It means something like an override. Let's say what it is. It's going to be a community conversation, and it means any and all options are on the table. Period. That's all it means. Or not.
Okay.
Or not.
Yeah.
But the question last week came up in a different way, which I took as a challenge, and I, I just want to stay away from that because that's not the reason not to do it.
And I, I, I hear you, and I'm not trying to say not to do it. I just kind of want to, I, I think we, as this body, need to just sort of ask the question to ensure that we're doing our due diligence to, to, to consider all options because down the road, we don't want it to be something we didn't know. We needed to, I'm not saying you ever say this, but I think we just, I, I just want a little reach. So that's all. It's not, it's not a conditional. So.
And I, I will say that it's helpful. I mean, I talked about our strategic planning. We are starting a new strategic plan in October. That will be in effect for FY twenty-three. My plan has always been to present you a five-year budget connected to that strategic plan as well as a five-year P E plan. Everything is going to be connected so that there should not be surprises. And one of the topics that is going to be looked into is equity. This is really about equity for students and how it's going to help the school system, not just in kindergarten, a K to twelve. It's also our vision of the graduate. And where they end up is going to start, it starts at pre-K and all the way up. So this is all going to rely with our strategic plan. And once we get that strategic plan in place, I will be able to help kind of estimate out what a five-year budget might look like for any of the things that we commit to. I'll be asking some of you to sit on that strategic planning process. So you will be committing yourselves in some way. If you're part of that planning, you all agree this is a community that we want to get. Then this is what it may cost. And maybe it isn't always about money. Sometimes it's about reorganizing what we already have. I don't always believe in adding to the budget. I'm also always thinking about how can we organize and be more strategic with the funds that we have.
And I, I firmly believe that, you know, we are, we're, we're partners in all of this, and we want to work as well with you and help you whatever way we can to be successful. Because when you succeed, you succeed, and everybody looking together.
You have the unenviable position of being the first ARPA request that comes forward that has an impact on the operating budget. You will not be the last, of course. Some of what this discussion tonight is, is, is this board testing the waters on how that conversation with any request that has a post-ARPA impact on the operating budget, whether it be staffing or programmatic in this case, you know, what's that conversation going to look like? And so, you know, the, the school committees and more decision-making when it comes to year five. So it's just a part of that conversation. It'll be the same for this board. You know, it's a department that we, of course, we'll be asking here. These same questions. So you're just in sort of that, again, unenviable position of being the first as we, as we figure this out. Yeah.
Sorry, I just to follow up on Mr. Crummond's question, and I mentioned it during the steering group meeting, but I want to make it public in this setting with regards to the question of why now, why the federal funds? You know, with regards to the interim final rule from the U.S. Treasury, as it pertains to the purpose and intent of the ARPA funds, this aligns with the addressing educational disparities category. So hands down, this is not a stretch for us to make an argument to U.S. Treasury or to D L S, who is the fiduciary agent through which the funds get to the town, that this is consistent with the, the purpose of the ARPA program at the federal level. So why the federal funds? Why now? This was a very easy one for me. I didn't have to do any creative reading of the interim final.
Well, this is a good time to point out that this was a six oh vote in favor of. And of the six people on the steering group, Chief Cassidy, you are a voting member for which the community has every reason to be grateful. You have steered us through every aspect of federal funding implications for the town of Holliston for over eighteen months. If Chief Cassidy is saying that this meets the qualifications, the requirements for any federal grant program, we, we all, you know, have eighteen-plus months of confidence that that is a statement of profound fact. So appreciate you sharing that. I, I mean, I, I think that this is a, I think my impression here is that time and time again, people in town want their leaders to step up and be bold and brave. They want us making decisions that represent their concerns. You referenced some of the concerns you've heard from families in Holliston. As a parent of four, I fully recognize those concerns. I was there four times over. I know exactly what you are talking about. I think this is a brave and a bold decision, and honestly, I'm, I'm proud to be a part of being able to move this forward. I know that this is something the school committee has valued for a very long time. It's very comforting to hear Chief Cassidy reassure everybody that this is a very much appropriate use of the funds. So I'm going to call for a vote to approve the request for a total of one point six two five nine for full-day kindergarten with use of the ARPA funds.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I will second it to, and also indicate that it would last for, that would be three years, right?
We're asking for six hundred fifty thousand for the first year, then forty-seven.
Forty-seven, right, and three twenty-five for the third year. Okay.
Right. The fourth year on, on the slide that we put up has to do with the other funding sources.
Okay. So it's asking for three years. Okay. Yeah, no, I have a second motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries, and we did not engage public comments today. You had an open meeting on Monday of last week.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Cynthia. I think it's going to be good for all of our students and the community.
Will you send out a district-wide email or will this be?
My plan is to tomorrow.
We can't wait to receive it. I'm very much looking forward to receiving it.
And they will be getting refunds as a result. I can't say when, maybe not till October because we have a long work to make.
Thank you for your work to prepare this. Truly, thank you. So we're going to move, thank you. We're going to move forward then with the viewpoint program, which was the second request that was before the steering group, and we have a six oh vote in favor of recommending that as an ARPA eligible expense.
So I would, let's get a quick summary and my program's called Viewpoint with Dennis Quaid. Doing some background, it appears that they have looked at a number of towns in our area that have prominent rail trails, seems to be how we got on their radar. I had some back and forth with them. The cost was outside of the scope of what the E D C has in their budget. And so I, I told them, you know, we'll get back to you if you're coming through again next year, maybe, or, or in the future. When ARPA became available, I discussed with Chief Cassidy, you know, certainly there's economic development components that he can cover for you, if that's a question as well. Re-engage them, and I think one of the things would be to see if we can, we can move this along quickly enough. We would want them to be in obviously doing, getting footage before it snows. A lot of the recreation that we have on the rail trail shuts down at that time. So engaged again with that. Couple of questions I wanted to get answered before I brought it to the ARPA steering group. Namely, the procurement of it, obviously, generally for, for these types of services, we'll go out, we'll do an R F P. This is not that we were approached. And so I did talk to the state about how that looks. This is a sole-source procurement per thirty B. It is rather comically or not, the sole-source nature of it is, is related to Mr. Dennis Quaid, but at the same point, I looked at the program, looked at what they would be doing and what the value would be to the town, which is, one, excellent production value of a number of segments of three- or five-minute educational segment produced as a standalone short-form documentary, a five- or six-minute corporate profile with the educational documentary profile, and then also a one-minute high-end, excuse me, high-end one-minute educational commercial segment used for network distribution, and then a variety of places at which that gets sent out. And the, the biggest thing for me at the end of the day, not only do we own the rights to all of these things, we also own the rights to all the B-roll, buy that to H-CAP, buy that to anybody, we get all of it. And it belongs to us, which is what, at the end of the day, I think we're procuring. Answered a couple of questions the other night on the E D C, namely, they wanted to know if we got the rest of the B-roll. The answer is yes. And if the production company had the right to go to any specific businesses and look for further revenue directly from them to be highlighted in this, which again, we would be protected of in the contract that they would not be allowed to do that. So with that, I think, again, you know, I think it is a, it is a high reward potential for a low risk. And I think it very much highlights the economic development component. I would be very excited to have the rights to this footage at the end of this that we would be able to use, and then also the way that they'll distribute it on behalf of the town.
Thank you. So we'll take some questions on that, John. Well, you have the benefit of having been on the steering group.
I've heard about this.
When I see six oh, I
Travis nailed it. That's, it's, it's money in the bank. It's, is that investment for economic development, and I think that's a very nice to be ARPA. You know, I think we, that was a unanimous vote.
Yes.
So, good.
I think my only question is, is that because it's a particular broker, vendor, vendor, when would they, like, we want to get it done as soon, as soon as possible. What if we prove it tonight, would they be able to do it very quickly?
I was sort of onboarding with them immediately, and that was part of the conversation I had with them. I laid out the timeline that we had once the ARPA steering group process got put in place. And, you know, it was relatively going to be dicey, but at the same point, I think they would be able to mobilize in time to get here in the fall, probably the October timeframe, get the footage and then go into production mode. They do lay out in the contract a project cycle of ninety to one hundred twenty days. The town will be involved in the storyboarding of the segment. And again, you know, we would get all of that footage.
That was my question. So I think I know what storyboarding is, but will we have an opportunity to weigh in on, say, we'd like to make sure that the business, local businesses in town are highlighted? We'd like to make sure that the marching band of the high school, do we have a marching band? That, you know, do we get a, do we get a chance to weigh in on what we would like to have?
Yes, the town will work with the producers to do that. The storyline overarching is discovering America, great places to live, work, and visit. But obviously, once you drill that down, you, you need to be much more specific on a storyline with the producers, and, and once we engage them with that, that would be within that, that timeframe of getting, that would be the first step.
Okay. All right. And then, you know, I, for, for me looking at this as an ARPA request, it checked the box in terms of economic development, as you, as you talked about. This, to me, very much seems like a incredibly valuable tool that can then be used by the E D C, as you mentioned, by H-CAP, as you mentioned, by any form of a Holliston Business Association that exists today or will exist in the near future. So I agree, there's a lot of value that you brought to. So we're going to move then, we have six oh vote from the steering group. We have no concerns expressed by this board, so we're going to, we have a comment from the chief.
Just again, I want to get on record at this setting that the interim final rule category was building stronger communities through investments in housing and neighborhoods. So again, this goes directly to the economic development of the hardest-hit areas, and certainly our businesses are, are in that category. So I, I wholeheartedly support this as well, and would have no problem defending this to a federal regulator.
Great. So I'm taking a motion to approve the recommendation for engaging with viewpoint with Dennis Quaid for twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. So that's the two requests that we have before the board. And just for clarity's sake, I heard it at your meeting on the ninth. The funds are currently available for these two FY twenty-two budget requests.
Yes, just brought that down, but I did put it at the bottom of the form I had up earlier. So actually, the dollar's in the bank, and I checked with the treasurer collector on Friday, and we had not received more, which was indicated by the state could be coming any day. The amount in the bank of the first half, the direct N E U payment to the town, seven hundred and one thousand four hundred nine dollars. The amount in the bank of the first half, the direct NEU payment to the town, seven hundred and one thousand four hundred nine dollars. We are expecting over the life of ARPA to, Mr. Farrell's earlier point, to be roughly four point four million. And some of the timing of that will have to do with when the money comes through the county, middlesex. Although, as Mr. Cronin mentioned on the ARPA steering group call, there have been indications that that, those monies could be coming very shortly.
And the Assistant Superintendent for Business Operations, is that his correct title these days?
Finance and.
Finance and Operations, I'll get it, it's only, it's only had it for six weeks. He indicated that from a cash flow perspective, the six hundred and fifty request that you just approved, that that wasn't all needed
Right.
September first, that those expenses are ongoing throughout the school year.
Okay.
It's not, gotta put it in a, in a difficult position from a cash flow standpoint on what's in the bank versus, you know, it's not gonna hamster us when we consider other requests this way.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna move on then to part B of the CARES Act, ARPA programmatic update, which we're gonna call tonight the community update, because I believe we have some information to share that is different from the past few weeks at least, where you haven't had much to share.
But, you know, we do have some good news that came in just prior to the meeting. I, I did receive notification from our nursing consultant through our health department that although earlier in the day I was listing thirty seven active cases, I was able to remove sixteen of them. So we're down to twenty one active, which means that we have eight hundred and twenty that are recovered and still only unfortunately eight deaths. Those represent two single cases at multifamily dwellings, three clusters at single family homes, and twelve single cases at single family homes. So based on our average daily incident rate per one hundred thousand last Thursday, our community did once again go back into the yellow. And our positivity rate was just below three percent last Thursday as well.
John, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, Ben?
I do not.
I do, we were, feels like, wasn't that long ago, but mere weeks ago, we were saying that we'd keep an eye on this as the fall approached and people start returning perhaps to work, certainly to school. And we'd have discussions, so I think with that in mind, I, I know the Board of Health is meeting later this month, August twenty fourth or twenty fifth. So looking for you to, to kind of let us know, is there any heads up that we should be aware of in terms of the Board of Health revisiting something like a mask mandate? Are we there yet? Are we not looking at that? Are we?
So the Board of Health has actually posted for meeting this Thursday to discuss a mask.
I was not aware of that.
I was looking on the website.
Yeah, so, so there, there are really two mask discussions happening in parallel.
Okay.
The school committee, policies subcommittee is meeting to discuss their mask policy, which was previously enacted, but it was rescinded, and then they are now, based on guidance from DSE, the DPH, looking to possibly reinstitute a mask policy for the twenty one, twenty two school year. And so they'll have a first reading and then they'll, where they'll, then they'll take public comment. And then they will vote on Thursday, the twenty sixth.
That's correct.
Trying to keep all these, so, you know, the, the guidance from the CDC from DPH are very consistent, strongly recommending that certain populations who are not currently eligible to get the shot under the existing EUAs would be masked, when we've had some discussions locally in the community between some school leaders and some public safety leaders, health leaders. In terms of, again, you're gonna hear the equity word a lot, the suggestion likely will be that it would be a very similar mask policy to what was in place at the end of the school year. So if you recall, on May twenty ninth, for statewide, most mitigation measures were lifted, except for certain sectors of our society, such as healthcare and transportation, but also the schools continued to have a mask policy that was in place to the end of the school year. And that policy extended for summer programming as well. So the question is, you know, what are they going to do when school starts again? Based on the fact that we are in the yellow, based on the fact that the Delta variant is more transmissible than earlier variants, it's very likely that an ISOP would support a pre K three twelve mask requirement in the schools, which would also include faculty, staff, any visitors to the buildings, just so that we don't need to get into the question of, are you vaccinated or you're not vaccinated? Do you have, you know, proof of your vaccination? We can just say, similar to what it was like post-May twenty ninth, that masks are going on in schools, it's school policy. It governs schools. That's one track of great discussion, and that's outside of, of our purview. We can speak into it, I have. But then you've also got the, what's, what's the town doing?
That's right.
And then with regards to town, you really also have two subtracts. You've got municipal buildings and then you've got basically everything but people's residences. So what, what are we doing with businesses? What are we doing with municipal buildings? I still believe, based on our vaccination rate, which is extremely high, based on our numbers of cases, although we've seen an increase in, in recent weeks. We're right on par with where we are at the, at the state level in terms of the, the increases they've seen. I still don't see an urgent need for a mask mandate in municipal buildings. I'm very comfortable, and, and as I look at the cases that we've taken on, you know, we now currently have twenty one active cases. We're not seeing a nexus at town buildings. We're not seeing that there was, there were a whole bunch of people who were at the farmer's market or were at a concert in the park at Goodwill, or, you know, were transacting business in municipal building and that's where they encountered it. The majority of our, our town staff in municipal buildings are vaccinated and those who are serving the most vulnerable populations, such as the library and such as the senior center, they are, their staff are masking, just because of who they're working with. You know, the library has a lot of younger patrons, so in solidarity with them and just out of respect for the fact that they're not eligible under just EUAs, most of the library staff are wearing masks voluntarily. Senior center staff are wearing them because they recognize they have vulnerable population. Our youth and family services, it's a clinical setting, they're, they've been wearing masks. So a lot of the higher risk, more direct client interaction with vulnerable populations are already masking. There's nothing to prevent an employee at the town hall, if they feel, based on their personal situation, that they would like to protect themselves, there's nothing to prevent them from voluntarily wearing one to work. Just as they may choose to wear one when they go to the grocery store, when they go to the pharmacy, but from a, from a data standpoint like that, where we are in terms of our numbers compared to where we've been in the past, and again, the fact that as of last Thursday, eighty three point eight per six, eighty three point eight six percent of our community is partially vaccinated and eighty five point nine is the number for twelve up. So we are, we are two percentage points apart from what would be essentially full participation of those that are eligible currently. I don't see an urgent need for us to institute in municipal buildings or in businesses. Because again, businesses, just like individual town buildings, it's been, individual business chooses based on their clientele, based on their staff, their personal preferences. If they want to mask and, and order anyone who comes in to mask, they're welcome to. But, you know, some of the feedback that we've gotten from some people is they're not interested in the townwide, you know, mask mandate indoors. They just don't see the need for it either.
Yeah, I see you drawing distinctions between populations that are unvaccinated because they don't have the ability to be vaccinated. I see you drawing that distinction. I see you drawing the distinction between, with the state, with the town's vaccination rate. And then I cite, see you drawing another distinction, which is the behaviors and habits that are in place within the community and within certain, in this case, in your specific case here, town employees and services. So I see you drawing those distinctions, okay. Okay.
So it will be interesting to see what happens on Thursday night with the Board of Health, when they have their discussion about the most recent metrics that came out on last Thursday evening. We went from the green to the yellow, but again, we are currently at an eleven point four average daily incident rate. At our height, we were at fifty four point one. So we, we are very low compared to where we were, and that was back in January when, you know, a very small percentage of our population was ineligible at that point for shots.
And all of your thinking is also in line with CDC recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah, we, we in Holliston are not, we do not meet this, the CDC definition for substantial transmission or high transmission. Substantial transmission would be fifty to a hundred cases per one hundred thousand. High transmission would be over a hundred cases per one hundred thousand. And substantial transmission would be a positivity rate between eight and ten percent. And high transmission would be a positivity rate of ten or higher. At our height, we were at six point three nine, that was that same week that we had fifty four point one average case.
Okay.
So we're, we're still.
You have a lot of numbers there.
I, I do, but, but yeah, I, I know where we've been, and that was before. Most, you know, ten thousand people got shot to their arms. So we, we've come a long way in seven months and I'm, I'm feeling comfortable with the path that we're on. And if we do it before a threshold that's set by CDC or DPH or some other external source, my concern is what would be touched on by which we then roll it back. Like if, if we do it now, when we're at two point nine six, what's the number where we say?
Because you're not.
We're not asking you because we're, we're being much more conservative than the, the federal guidance.
Okay, okay, just as a, a side point, when you go to that, would you report back to the board?
Yes.
Whether it be at this meeting or the next one, that would be just.
You will likely gonna need to offer a thing.
Alright.
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't think we have, unless we have questions, John and Ben.
Okay, fine, do a nice job, thanks.
Thank you, that's a lot of detail. Anyone on the call or anyone in the room with public comment or question? Seeing done, we're gonna let the team go and move on to number four, number four.
Number four twice?
Number four twice, which is, I'm trying to find how to say it right. Again, once, we should have one for the town.
One receiving totaling. Three million seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars and twenty two cents.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Anything else, John?
What's that? It's good, correct Travis?
Yes, just the.
Okay, so we will move on then to public comment, John?
Two quick items. Met with Officer Shret and Chief Stone last week to discuss the officer's plan to bring forth to this board a proposal for a community resource dog. A lot of questions about the initiative. Officer Shret answered most of them and promised a little bit of homework on a couple. I'm gonna leave it to Chief Stone if he brings it forth to us. But it would be basically a self-funded initiative to provide a dog for a variety of different policing purposes outside the traditional canine areas, but it's an area that many communities and state law enforcement groups are looking towards, and Officer Shret's been some work on this now. It becomes fourth, it'll come through the chief, but I want to give this board a head up, a heads up that it's something that's been planned and looked into. So we're in that shortly. This afternoon, I participated in a call with Parks and Recreation as well as Travis, Sean Reese and James Keys to discuss the next steps associated with planning the decoupling of parks maintenance from parks recreation. Mark Frank was on the call as well as members of the finance committee. We wanted to introduce the issue to them early so we can start laying the groundwork for what's likely to be a little bit of a complex issue. And that is identify each and every item in the Parks and Recreation spectrum that needs to move from their location into DPWs. We talked a little bit about the assignment of similar role under rail, under rail trail. But there's gonna be a fair amount of work involved to identify not just those tasks or metrics that we talked about, but also the cost. Parks have some form of compensation associated with maintenance and those things probably have to move over. But over the next several months during this time period leading up to likely the spring, we'll be talking about how we can best do this. The reason we're doing it is to make it better, not just simply to rearrange the pieces on a piece of paper. There will likely be a request before this board, as we build the FY twenty three budget to fund this, this initiative and it will likely come in the form of additional service contracts and or personnel. So these details will follow the next several months, but the dialogue has become, most importantly, and with city in the room, I see. We're at this time, not bringing in the schools into the discussion, because we want to kind of get the, you know, the flavor of what's in front of us. If and when the schools want to discuss this, I'm not, I'm not closing the door, but it's a deliberative attempt to kind of keep the scale where it is right now. We recognize the community's got, very, we've heard from the community loud and clear on surveys about the conditions of fields, and I think it does include the school fields as well. But I hope you appreciate, we're not trying to leave you all out of the discussion, we're just trying to keep it simple right now. We'll get, we'll get there.
Okay, as long as you involve our, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, that's, that's all time to get.
Yeah, it came up, and then members of the finance committee brought it up today. And again, when I'm trying to exclude you, we're just trying to keep it simple right now, but it may move there, so just heads up.
John, will it be a full, fully implemented in FY twenty three or FY twenty will start? What sounds like there are several steps or?
Uh, that's an open question right now, yep. But for sure, the, the latter, we're looking to start something, whether or not we can embrace the full implementation. Money talks, want to see it or I'll shake it off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, exciting. Um, I do have two public comments. First is, we had a meeting for the Blair Square Committee last week to look at the ninety percent plans for, from Beals and Thomas. They're beautiful, but there is still some work to be done. There's a few issues to resolve and to work through and hope to have that in front of this board in the next couple of weeks. It's supposed, it's, it's, it's kind of a tight timeline because of the town meeting and CPC and things like that. So there might be like a lot of stuff happening in early September, like it's a planning board meeting, it's September third-ish. That's off the top of my head, and the hope would be to be in front of this board. And then the second thing is, the Comprehensive Long Range Planning Committee is off doing its thing and changing the same to envisioning future Holliston, if you saw them also at work. It's kind of an exciting idea that some things there, and I, what I really am excited about on there is, first of all, Stacy's the chair. Yes.
I'm sorry, Travis.
And it was part two, so it was part two. But I think what's exciting is, you know, being on this board and having some guidance from the community on, you know, what's important. You know, we certainly have a firm understanding of what we think it is, and there might be some spaces that we're missing. And part of the exercise is to go out and to collect some information over the next couple of months. And the hope is to have some preliminary surveys with some basic questions in the next few weeks so we can start gathering data.
Ben, just in terms of the Blair Square comment that you made, are you fairly confident it'll be a request for, for October town meeting? Is there wiggle room for a May request, in terms of their thinking or?
It, you know, it really, it depends on a, a few different factors. I think the, the goal is to try to get it on the October warrant, so everything will be done to try to get it there. That doesn't mean May is out of the question, it might mean there may be some more work that needs to be done, but the, the hope is to have it.
Thank you. My only public, public comment is a reminder that the select board will not be meeting on Monday of next week. We will instead be meeting Thursday, August twenty sixth, so we're postponing it just a couple of days, same week, different day. That's it for the board of comments, so anyone in the room or anyone on the call with public comment? I cannot tell, Justin, if the hand is your prompt or it is actually Michelle's.
The cursor.
Okay, so we're gonna move on from public comment then, and number six comes from the town administrator.
Great, thank you. We had a long night, I'll talk quick. The Cable Advisory Committee is approaching the end of the process from Verizon. They posted a meeting for this Wednesday, the eighteenth. Additionally, and they, they've sent a draft, which has been sent to myself and the Select Board Liaison, who's Mr. Cronin. Additionally, as we approach and begin to talk about the warrant for October, we are gonna be now switching from the Verizon contract to the Comcast contract. Previous town meeting and appropriated legal funds for Bill August, who's the legal counsel in negotiating these contracts, so we will probably have a warrant article to fund the negotiations on the Comcast contract. Comcast contract luckily will be for a longer duration, meaning we have to do it less frequently. They can go up to ten years. So this Wednesday, the eighteenth, Cable Advisory Committee will be. Uh so this Wednesday, the eighteenth Cable Advisory Committee um will be uh finishing Verizon and then moving Comcast soon. Um they will be posting a a public hearing on Comcast as well. Uh as an update on the hiring of the ATA slash HR Director, the same uh hiring group, uh excuse me, committee, we did an excellent job uh finding us candidate through the first round. We're going to reconvene. Um that posting is open through this Wednesday, the eighteenth. We are scheduling that that uh group to meet with the candidates on Monday, August twenty sixth. Um and that, again, the hiring committee is the same, uh which is Superintendent Susan Kuska, uh Police Chief um Matt Stone, the Treasure Collector Mary Bousquet, Town Planner Karen Sherman, the uh Parks Director Mark Frank, and the IT Director Chris Mann, a six six-person per uh group. Did an excellent job, though, reconvene. The second round will be held on September first. The Chair of the Board will be with me, potentially a third uh member uh for round round two, and then the hope would be to get a candidate in front of you uh as early as potentially uh September thirteenth. If that's not doable, September twentieth uh may be a possibility as well. So we're not looking to have somebody in the door until October, but we are moving along with the process as we previously discussed. Um one last thing, uh actually, I have to uh two more things. So I spoke with DLS TAB last week as well as an update. Uh we discussed at a previous meeting. Um they will most likely get us a report, even if it's in draft form, in time to be considered for the October town meeting. Um and I will make sure that they are in touch with the Governance Committee to see if um there is any synergy between uh where those two things are going. Um most likely based on my conversation, certainly some of the things that they're talking on bigger picture that I would think of as more May than October. Um but obviously, the Governance Committee has been meeting all along, as discussed, as sort of a a every town meeting approach um that they've been discussing. Um and we'll see if DLS TAB um supports that or or if we're looking at May instead of October. Uh but we will have at least a draft form of the report in, I I would say, before the warrant closes, based on my conversation with them. I put in a letter to the state requesting a hundred thousand dollars on Goodwill. Thank you very much to Rep Dykema's staff, David Mally, for helping that happen. Um you'll, it will be going on tomorrow morning, uh but it was finalized today. You'll be CC Rep Dykema, obviously Senator Spoke as well. Um and hopefully we can get that hundred thousand dollars um to begin planning uh for the the items at Goodwill Park that may also overlap slightly um with what we're we're working on at Nine Green Street as well, thinking about that sort of holistically, how to make that all work. Lastly, we had talked about dams and getting a group together. Chris Badjek, uh I don't know if I'm saying his name correctly, um is the Chair of the ConCon. We asked for the ConCon to give us somebody to to have a working group, begin to look at all of the reports we got from Leonard, including the EAPs, which are due any day now. Um and then look at next steps, which is, you know, let's let's start to um take the now in compliance, the recommendations from those reports and put them into action. Um I don't think there's anybody here who's uh looking to wait uh any longer than we have to. Um then, oh, excuse me, I have one last thing, which was um the uh information that went to the board, and we'll continue to update as we get closer, but uh this this day come to the board is um the Holliston American Legion has invited you and will be inviting others to the nine eleven awards ceremonies to be held on Sunday, September twelfth, ten AM, Holliston Senior Center. Um this, they will be recognizing eight members of HPD, six members, six members of HFD, the Animal Control Officer, and this year they will also be recognizing an unsung citizen. Um so we will continue to mention that as we get closer, but the event is September twelfth at the Senior Center. That's all I have.
Travis, just real quick, um on the hundred thousand for Goodwill, once it's received by the town, what is the next step? We will put out.
Um no, so they all along, um
Right, why did I ask that question?
As their um, they've had that as their priority.
Right.
The bathrooms there, um there's a discussion. The bathrooms are are also sort of part of a structure that could be optimized um for all the programming they do there.
So Parks and Recs kind of takes it and they do, they start their planning process.
I'll work with with Mark Frank. Um we would do an RFP for services to plan that.
And then, again, they'll all book at Parks and Rec.
The money is designed for parks, right? Though it made it into the FY twenty-two states budget under DCR.
Okay.
Um it is intended for parks, although the way that Rep Dykema wrote it, or excuse me, and the way our representatives in the State House got it into the budget, it does allow for flexibility to also go outside of Goodwill and and touch on Nine Green Street as a a sort of holistic approach to that section and making it easier for residents to get there, enjoy the amenities there. Um so it is open to Nine Green Street as well as um Goodwill Park, although I will say, based on the cost estimates of um fixing and making um usable the bathrooms at Goodwill Park, a hundred thousand dollars is probably the beginning of uh what may be additional requests, most likely through the CPC.
Through the CPC, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. All set? Any questions for the town administrator? Okay, so we're gonna move on then to a discussion of financial policy. So we have both the staff recommendations for updates as well as who else, uh the scheduled meeting with other. So Travis, do you want to take this one? You shared with this board um the existing financial policies with edits that again have come from the financial staff. Everyone here, John and Ben, we've had a chance to review it. You all have the opportunity to share any comments we might have back to Travis. So the question is whether or not there's anything you'd like to discuss here as a board. If not, Travis, you had wanted to entertain some discussion on a potential change to the financial policies to address cannabis revenue. So first, is there anything, John or Ben?
I'm gonna just give a quick.
Yeah.
Highlight. Um so the the approach to this, every two years, um is to look at the financial policies. I I like that. I think it works. Um and, you know, what what we did this year, Sharon Emrick, uh Mary Bousquet and myself sat down, looked at it from a staff perspective, the things that we've been seeing, the feedback we got from the S and P call, which we were upgraded to AAA, um and some other feedback. We have some changes um to the landscape and put together some recommendations, which we've sent to the Select Board and the Finance Committee. Um these policies are are town policies, and those are the two main boards um that will be involved in it. It also touches on, obviously, the school committees, so I'll be reaching out to them as well. But you have the sort of first draft, and the thought with that as well would be um, you know, to to go through the process of getting any feedback from you and the Finance Committee first on the the draft that was sort of recommended from staff. Um and go from there and see if we can, you know, if if there's some tweaks that need to be made and we can finalize it, and if there are, and there's sort of um larger scale issues, then put everybody together in a room and go through them. Um I highlighted a couple of things uh in the overall picture um that I sent to the Select Board and Finance Committee. One is viewing OPEB and pensions, two sides at the same coin. Um one of the major changes to the policies this year, not because of recommendation from staff, but because of the change in landscape, is that we now have a pension fund for the town to consider outside of the Middlesex County Retirement System. Um and we tried to put together what we thought was a viable approach to funding that. Um and then the other thing that I highlighted in that email to you and the Finance Committee was, I I think it is time, and I think October is the time to do it, is to put in place a plan of how the town would like to proceed with cannabis revenue. Um we are relatively new to it in the grand scheme of of um how long Holliston has existed. Uh we are probably four years into uh having revenue and three years into having it um to the point where it's moving the needle on free cash and things of that nature. Um there have been some changes of what the state will allow us to do. I did speak with Town Council, and I'll speak again with them on it. Um I did speak with DLS, uh including um the regional rep uh that oversees Holliston on what they would recommend. And so I have a few things to discuss. Um one of them would be, you know, a local option potential uh going into October, which the town can essentially decide uh if it would like to set aside uh some or all of that into a stabilization that exists, a new stabilization fund. But either way, uh by adopting a local option potentially in October, um it would also interact with the policies that we put in front of you, and they're not in there at the moment. Um so it will be another sort of discussion to have.
Can you give me your general sense of timeline? You mentioned a scenario by which there's little conflict or discussion that needs to be worked out in a larger group. That's one scenario. In that scenario, do you see uh this being before both this um Finance Committee and the Select Board in a certain timeframe?
So what I tried to highlight, because it I, the document actually tracks the year and month that it was the last updated. So every two years it gets updated. And and you see that it had been updated August, September, October, November, December, and February. Um so it is, it it is not that we are beholden to a schedule to get this done. I think we do have some lead time. That's why I took this approach to get it on, see if we get feedback and and work through that feedback. Um the only time sensitive thing is I references, we could, if if everybody was sort of um swimming in the same direction on cannabis revenue, put something in October. At the same point, whatever we did in October in terms of a local option may not actually take effect until FY twenty-three. So realistically, that also could wait until May. Um and so I don't think at this moment I'm feeling the pressure to get this done immediately. I think, you know, we we made some significant recommendations that I think what we would really just like feedback on at the moment, and then reevaluate it once we get that feedback.
Let me ask a question in a different way. As we move into the budget process for FY twenty-three, do you see these amendments, these edits, as being a key piece to be approved prior to the start of the FY twenty-three budget process?
Yes, um for the reason that the OPEB Trust Committee, um which oversees the OPEB Trust Fund uh is is approaching based on the the last financial policy document, um was tasked with looking again at the the funding schedule for the FY twenty-three budget cycle. Um and so the OPEB Trust Committee meets essentially biannually and, uh meaning two times a year, not every other year, uh and will be doing that most likely in the December timeframe. And so at that point, having a policy in place and the way that, you know, these recommendations were made would indicate that, you know, um when we reach out to the actuarial um firm, that that would allow the OPEB Trust to have more clarity through a policy, although what the policy, policy cannot dictate what the OPEB Trust Committee does, and therefore is really just sort of making a recommendation of the way to approach it. Um and two of the members of the finance staff that that of the three that put this together are members of the OPEB Trust Committee, Mary Bousquet and myself. Um and so that would be one of the time constraints on this.
Thank you. Um John, any questions or comments you want to add?
Two questions, uh two comments, actually. Um I I'm fine with all the edits. I thought they were refreshing and um well thought out. I am very happy to see that the town administrator is moving to try to create a stable, excuse me, a um yeah, stabilization fund for cannabis. We talked about that three years ago in a fell on deaf ears. It's much needed. It separates the type of revenue we're getting to the type of expenses you'll associate with it. Makes perfect sense. If I recall correctly, our uh bond rating agency looked at our books and said, you need more stabilization accounts. You need to separate your revenue in ways that are meaningful, you can track, is that correct?
Yeah, so one of the other things that we we put forward is a is a fund balance policy that doesn't currently exist, and that speaks to that point.
The USP.
There, yeah, there are multiple different types of fund balances. Um the capital expenditure fund is an assigned fund balance for the specific purpose of capital. The general stabilization fund is unassigned fund balance. It helps us control that number, which is something we get stacked up against with S and P. And so they did mention sort of you can, you can have more than these, those two funds for specific purposes. Uh and cannabis is a potential.
So the other question I have, Tina, is should we be thinking ahead that uh solo revenue would fit into its own stabilization?
Right, so I mean, we we certainly can fit. The the town can create essentially as many stabilization funds as it wants. It is, it is the the way that you set up the fund that makes it assigned or unassigned. If it has a specific purpose and can only be used that way, the town accountant needs to follow those. Um and we do, and the town clerk does when we put together the warrant, right? It sets it up that way. Um all of those also, we have the ability to essentially say, we want this money to go into our general sales fund, right, and a policy of of having where we want that balance to be, um can can all play into it. The the change on cannabis does come from the state level. So at the at the beginning of all of this, when the town first received cannabis revenue, the town accountant looked at the options of do of dealing with it, and there was no viable option until uh probably a year later when the local option was offered. And then at that point, Holliston did not adopt it, to your point. Um so there have been changes in the last three to four years um that we now, we now have the ability to look at what other towns have done. Um and we also have more freedom for the town meeting to adopt some some remedies.
No other questions? Thank you.
Uh yeah, just a couple of things. Um first, I I'm very happy with the edits. I think it's uh, I was really pleased to see um to to borrow a phrase from Mr. Cronin, meat on the bones of some of these policies. I think it's good to see some things, some specifics, and you know, I'm proud of the fact that uh the financial team managed to get us a AAA bond rating through our work, and I want to make sure that we maintain that. And having prudent financial policies is a is a good way to get there. Um uh so I think, you know, when it when it comes to the cannabis revenue, I think it is probably, you know, it is probably a good idea to do some sort of stabilization, particularly as it's a fluid uh uh legal situation, and I'm sure the state at some point might say, we need to do this with this, and we can only do certain things with it. And having it in stabilization puts us in a advantageous position before that happens, not trying to backtrack and and figure things out. Um so I think it makes a lot of sense to uh to separate that money. Um I think um uh that being said, I think that's uh it's a it's a good conversation to have um as soon as we can. And I think it's uh, I think we should talk about it and see what we we need to do with it. So uh thank you for doing these edits, and thanks to Mary and Sharon for uh putting this the uh these changes together. And I think uh I appreciate uh the hard work that they you are all doing to uh maintain these finances and to put us in a good position in the future. So thank you. I'm all set.
Okay, great. I don't have any comments in that. Um the edits make sense. They add clarity where perhaps there was some tweaking that needed to be done in terms of just general housekeeping and bringing things up to date. I think that. Sorry, I have nothing else to say. Uh any comments for the town administrator on the discussion of financial policies? It's not for anybody here in the room, so it's really just a board con- conversation.
Why is the name of the file Financial Policies FinCom Approved? Have they already approved this?
No, no, that's a an old name of the file that it was given to me. Um and so I will be with the FinCom tomorrow night. As I said, they've been provided it as well. Um and I would say if I get any feedback in the Select Board and FinCom, what we will be looking for is for both of those um groups to sign off on a final document. Um that is what I.
Do you like to take a motion for this?
I know that um Ms. Heine sent me some edits earlier based on um, you know, some of the the definitions, which are a little, I had not honestly, we had not really looked hard at the definitions. Um so we certainly already have some tweaks there from the Select Board. Um but, you know, if if you are good with the overarching, um that would be fine.
Okay.
I will be making a couple of changes, I guess, based on some feedback I got from the.
And that's on me.
I think I think you have a very artful motion if you'd like to hear it.
It's up to. It's up to the clerk.
I'll make I'll make a motion to approve the financial policies as presented by the town administrator, subject to the scriptness errors and messages that he would choose to make in the upcoming document.
Uh we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Um. Uh yeah, I'll I'll second that.
That just allows him to make those.
Make those edits.
Non-consequential edits.
Yeah, I'll second it.
No content changes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All favor.
I.
Okay, that carries. Um, okay. So we're gonna end. Oh, we have a question.
I just want to just make sure that we get a copy before our meeting with the edits. We know what you've approved.
Absolutely.
Because you're five eighty-three Winter Street.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna close the discussion of financial policies and move on to rapid fire board business.
Make the motion to approve the meeting minutes of July sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All favor.
I.
That carries.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All favor.
I.
Like to skip C. Uh.
Do you want to give a reason why?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh I have a right of a request to approve the celebrate policy event on September eighteen. Um very briefly, just includes request to close Central Street between Washington Street and Blair Square. And the plan has been reviewed with Holliston PD. The time is between seven thirty AM uh on Saturday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
You have a motion. Do you have a second?
Um you said it starts at seven thirty. When is it?
There's no end date on this chat.
I promise.
Let's see if I have a permit. Two o'clock. Sorry, that's a date.
They're not doing it the same as they've done it in years past. It's much more scaled back. Yes, I believe it's twelve o'clock, just based on the next.
Three o'clock. Yeah, seven thirty to close the street. The duration will be five and a half hours until three PM.
Give us a motion. Trying to read this. I see, I'll make, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? I, is this the first time you've casted Central Street's been closed down since I've been in Holliston? Nineteen eighty-one? I think it is. I don't ever recall Central Street being closed for.
Briefly for parades.
Okay.
But not for that length of duration.
I presume you'll be relocating your emergency equipment to deploy without.
That is correct. I was part of the plan.
You can head.
Make a motion to change the farmer's market permit to September eighteen, twenty twenty-one. I will second that motion.
All in favor? Aye, okay, approved, moving on.
Make a motion to approve the event permit for the Senior Center Fall Fair on September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, from nine AM to three PM.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Make a motion to accept the Senior Center donation of five hundred dollars from the Tiberio Charitable Foundation.
I will second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Holliston's open for business in September. A busy, uh, fall.
Now you can do what you do with.
I think the feasibility study is most.
C, yeah.
Okay, so we have a proposal for a DPW feasibility study to be formed by Weston and Sampson. We have their proposal here. There was, there was an opening of bids, and this was the one selected.
Yes, we procured this under seven C, got just some feedback. We, James Keyes, so his manager, Sean Reese, DPW Director, and myself opened these. James Keyes did quite a bit of legwork on the top two candidates that were relatively close in our grading, which I believe was also provided previously. And Weston and Sampson were selected. If you have any questions, James Keyes is in the room with us. And, you know, both of the top two choices, which were excellent, had worked with some communities in our area, so James was able to discuss with them and do some reference checking, and we were very comfortable with Weston Sampson's selection.
Okay, any questions from the board? I have none.
How much did we approve? Seventy-five thousand dollars?
So James, you are looking for a motion to accept the contract, to approve the contract for Weston and Sampson?
That's correct.
When would they start?
They've already asked for some information to begin. I'll start this week.
Okay, and their time to completion, it's in here somewhere.
It's five months.
Five months, okay, thank you. John, Dan, do you have any questions?
Nope, nope.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to find new agreements over here with Smith and Snow.
Weston and Sampson. It's late. I'm gonna make DPW.
Being in Vermont on vacation, twenty-one-year-old.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's move on quickly. All right, so we are done with board business, and we are going to move on to other business. John, do you have any other business for tonight?
I do not.
Okay, Ben, do you have any other business for tonight?
I do not.
I only have one, which is to follow up, John, on a comment that you made about the engineer earlier in the meeting about.
At the end of the year.
Engineer?
Oh, yes, yes.
The part-time. My question, which is related to the services provided by an engineer, is if Holliston is in the future to enter into a tip process where we're going to chase the tip to try to get funding for something like Concord Street, say, or some larger section of Route sixteen, if that becomes something that comes out of the conversation with DOT that we get advice to go seek funding through the tip process. My question, and I don't know, it's obviously a very open one, is do we stand a much better chance with a full-time engineer supporting that kind of process? I know we're not getting an answer tonight, not looking for one, but I am familiar enough with the MPO tip process to know that some communities engage a consultant to do the work, and I just don't know the scope of that work, how much time it entails. So we have not, in our history, probably seen Holliston engage in the tip process to know just how many hours of service you need from an engineer or consultant. So that was the only thought I had, where I know what you're saying about, do we have enough work to be done in Holliston for a full-time engineer, but I just thought the tip might tip over.
I did provide to the liaisons, because as Michelle and Ben had indicated, or we had the conversation, Ben Sparrow was the liaison to find the DPW. And I did put together a sort of a report out of units on all of the sort of most common engineering terms that we use on an annual basis. And, you know, annually, we're getting engineering services in the four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar range, when you strip out sort of what a town engineer would not be able to do, right? Just as if we hired a town council, they wouldn't be able to do everything that a law firm does, right? A town engineer would take up a substantial amount that we're currently farming out, but would not necessarily be able to do everything. You know, once you strip that out, you get down into the two hundred thousand dollar a year range of what we're spending on engineering and reasonably what we could discuss that would fall to a town engineer. Now then, you move into a separate category of also having the overhead and the benefits and those types of things of having a position, and I think that that's where the conversation lies. But do I think that we could have a reasonable conversation, whether it's shared service or an FTE for the town and make it a zero bottom-line impact to the town? I think we could probably make that case. I don't know, quite honestly, the tip.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a.
I think it would help. I mean, obviously, if you're planning something that expands it to have somebody that works for you, working with Mastah, and they move the wood, that can't hurt. Makes sense.
And I think the other thing, and I think Mr. Cronin brought it up with our StanTech friends, is what's gonna happen with this GIS information, you know, sort of when they leave. And the answer is that, you know, we have an assessing department that needs GIS information. We have a building inspector who uses people GIS and probably is the most involved with it. We have a planning department and our DPW highway department, who's, you know, very impacted by GIS. But there is no sort of one person who oversees our GIS data and information and keeps it consistent and makes sure that we're in good position and ties it all together, because that's what a town engineer does in most of the towns in our area. So I think, you know, there's certainly some opportunities lost by not having that position. The tip would probably just be one, exactly.
You put it on the emergency calendar.
It does a lot.
It's good.
Your GIS.
We actually use GIS as well for hydrant locations.
Hydrant locations is also in GIS.
That's one of the layers.
I know that this is so, I will entertain a motion to adjourn it.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Good night, Holliston, and we will see you Thursday, August twenty-sixth at seven PM. Good night.